Good evening and welcome to the 15th meeting of fiscal year 2023 for the Milton Planning Board. I'd like to now call the meeting to order and thank you for you all who have been patiently waiting. We had some technical difficulties getting, getting on. If I could begin by introducing the members of the board. If we could go around and introduce ourselves, Cheryl.
Cheryl Tagaya, Secretary.
Maggie.
Maggie Oldfield, Member.
Rich.
Rich Fielder, Member.
Sean.
Sean Fahey, Member.
And our staff, Tim.
Uh, Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Uh, Julia.
Julia Getman, Clerk.
And I don't see Josh, is he here?
Not yet.
Not yet, that's okay, alright.
Oh, I mean, I mean, uh, so he was, um, he actually got married over the weekend.
Oh, that's great.
So, yeah, congratulations to him and then I got stuck in, uh, San Francisco because of the FAA, uh, difficulties.
Oh dear.
Tough time to fly.
We'll welcome him when he comes, that's great. Um, so just to get, um, moving here, administrative items. Uh, the first item is the approval of our minutes and we have two sets of minutes. December 8th and December 21st. There were four of us here, I don't know if, um, if you all have had a chance to look over December 8th. Cheryl had a few edits.
Yeah, I was, I was actually good with both sets of meeting minutes, but did I see a revision that just came out today? Was, was there a revised set of meeting minutes? I, I had sent my note back to Julia last week and told her I was good with both of them, but I feel like there was another issue with the meeting minutes revised today, am I right?
Not today, it was yesterday.
Yesterday, okay, I apologize, but I have not, whatever those meeting minutes either came out yesterday revised, I have not seen.
Okay, alright, so let's hold off on the 8th. And the 21st. I was good with the minutes from the 21st. Cheryl obviously was not here, but, um, they looked good what Julie had provided.
I was good with them as well.
Great, so can I have a motion to accept the minutes for December 21st?
I propose a motion to accept the minutes from the December 21st.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, okay, uh, Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Myself, yes, thank you. And we'll do the next, next time. So, next, um, on the agenda is a discussion for the, um, upcoming meeting dates. On the schedule, we have, uh, the 26th of January and the 9th of February. Is that good for everybody?
You repeat that? Yeah, unfortunately, the 9th of February, I, um, I'll, I'll be going up to, uh, I'll be out of the country.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Okay. But everyone else is good? We did have, um.
You repeat those dates.
Oh, sure, the 20, January 26th and February 9th.
Uh, February 29th, I'm good, but February, January 26th.
February 9th.
Yes, that's what I said, February 9th, I'm good, but January 26th, I'm away.
Okay.
January 26th, um, I'm not available either.
Alright, Tim?
And, and I'm actually not available on the 26th either.
Okay.
A regularly scheduled meeting, um, it's funny that it weren't lined up that way. Um, yeah, no, I, uh, so, I mean, do we want to work out a schedule now or maybe we can do a poll?
Let's do a poll, I think it's easier, I think. Yeah.
So, um, that, that, it's, I, I, two, two quick things on this. I had, um, I, I, I had reached out to the elected delegation. To invite them to, um, a planning board meeting. Um, and I, I put out the 26th and the 9th, um, as dates, just, you know, again, because they were the regularly scheduled meetings. I, I haven't heard back from anybody, so, you know, maybe it's, it's fortuitous, um, that, that, that happened.
The only thing, the only other thing that I see Ned's hand up and I think I know what he's going to say, is that, in a discussion we had at the Historical Commission meeting, he was going to open the public hearing and move that public and, and continue it to the 26th, which he would not be able to do. So, we probably should maybe work out a date. Do we want to bring Ned in or we can discuss that?
I just allowed Ned to talk.
Ned, go ahead.
Thank you, um, Ned Corcoran. My understanding of the public meeting law with a public hearing is that you will have to, if you can, if you open the hearing tonight, you'll have to continue it to a date certain on the record. And so you'll have to pick a night.
Ned, Ned, if we moved it to February 9th?
That would be fine with me.
Is that, would that work, um, to do that, because we, I think we just have, um, Sean will be out of the country, but.
We have, I have one other item, um, that is coming. That, uh, we had overlooked previously with the, uh, memory care. Bylaw that the, the planning board is supposed to re, and the fire chief is supposed to review and approve the scope of the fire access and truck access plan. We've met with the fire chief, but we do need to come back and meet with you to review and approve that plan. We were hoping to do that on the 26th.
Right.
To notice the neighborhood, uh, as well.
Would it be helpful, Ned, if we just put both of those on for the 9th?
I think the 9th, uh, I think we can manage the 9th, uh, with respect to that one as well.
I mean, once we have a date. Yeah, we should have a date, um, in the next day or two, where, uh, Tim could reach out to you and if you wanted to, whatever date that would be, come with the memory care.
Yeah, if you, if, if in the interim you pick up, uh, a, a, a date between now and the 9th, uh, that's not a public hearing, it doesn't have to be noticed. Obviously I have to notify the neighborhood in advance, but, um, um, that would, that, that would work.
Okay.
The 9th would be okay as a fallback.
Okay. Great, so does that sound good? We'll, we'll keep our date of the 9th, um, Tim, maybe we can talk about, um, the delegation coming. And perhaps a following meeting when everybody's here, I almost would prefer.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree, and then we may need to, um, bring in the, the heavy hitters, uh, in terms of outreach, and, and by heavy hitters, I mean you, Meredith. So.
Yes.
So that, that, that'll be fine, we can, uh, we can, we can definitely work that out.
Okay.
And I think the other thing, you know, relative to future meeting dates, uh, Meredith, we talked about this last week, um, is, um, you know, what, what is the sentiment around returning to in-person meetings?
Right. And I know everyone's been sick, so you're probably grateful we're all on Zoom. This week, but I don't know how everyone else is feeling. On the night.
Did we talk about, um, whether we would try and do one per month and, and have a hybrid model also? Because, um, I, I do think it's convenient for members of the public to attend, um, by Zoom, because then they can tune in when it's the topic on the agenda that interests them most, rather than having to sit in the, uh, town hall for hours.
Right.
Potentially until 11 at night. So, uh, I think it just gives an option for people, so the hybrid, I would advocate for the hybrid. When we are in person and, um.
And Tim, I think when we have the delegation, we should probably, I think that meeting should be in person. I think that would be nice.
Yeah, we can, we, we can certainly do that, and, you know, um, you know, the Select Board and the Warrant Committee have been having, um, you know, hybrid meetings, I think, with, with a decent amount of success. So, I mean, it was something that we were, um, kind of dipping our toe in for a while, but, um, you know, the team at MATV, I think, has, has, has really kind of gotten the hang of things. So, um, I, I, I don't see why that wouldn't be, I, I think the Blue Room is equipped for that, I'll, I'll double check. But, um, you know, you know, we would want to get trained up as a staff on that, it shouldn't be that difficult, so, um, I think that's, that's doable.
Because that, that's the way the Warrant Committee has been working, and it seems to be working well, so, great.
So we'll, 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 we'll put a pin in the 9th for that. You know, I'll talk to MATV about, you know, what the, what the capabilities are. We'll make sure that, um, Julia and, and Josh and myself kind of understand how to, how to operate things and, and what the, uh, what the protocols are. And then, you know, I, I think as always, you know, we may want to just kind of check in as we're doing the agenda, kind of see what the conditions are, the wastewater line is going down, which is nice, but, you know, who knows what happens, you know, by February? So, um, I think we can definitely keep an eye on all that stuff.
Sounds great.
Also, uh, may I suggest that we kind of keep in mind what the agenda items are? It seems to me some things, uh, are, do well over Zoom, but other things might benefit from in-person, so, maybe that's one way to think about it.
Yeah. I think, that's great. Good, alright, then next, um, let's, we can move on to your staff update, Tim.
Um, I'll, I'll try to keep it relatively brief. Ned mentioned earlier, um, that there is an, another item, um, for you to review relative to the memory care. Excuse me, uh, special permit. That, that application is coming along, um, you know, Ned and his team, um, are, are working on getting a special permit application together. You know, without making any, any promises on behalf of Ned, um, that's something that we should be seeing in the next couple weeks to months-ish, I don't want to, I don't want to go too far over my skis on that, um, but that one is coming. The, the other one that we, um, we just received this week is a, um, a brand new site plan approval application for 440 Granite Ave. You may have been following that at the Board of Appeals, there's a revised, um, concept, a, a four-floor building as opposed to a five-floor building, uh, with some corresponding, um, you know, site and, and landscape changes. So, we're in the process of, um, reviewing that, uh, for completeness, I've been a little shorthanded, um, with Josh out, but, um, that's another one that, you know, we'll look at the agenda, um, for the 9th, I, I don't know if, if it'll, we'll, we have it in, so we've got to, you know, get a hearing scheduled sooner rather than later, so we'll, we'll just have to work that out, so, um, you know, we, we, we've got that one. We're, we're, we're pretty full tonight, so I don't want to go into other kind of random stuff, um, so, that'll be it for, for now, um, so thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so now we can move to Citizens Speak. That, we do have two public hearings tonight and, um, folks will be welcome to speak at that time, or you can speak in advance, um, on something that's not on the agenda. Just raise your hand if anyone would like to speak. I see Mr.
I've got Robert Rozowski, um, so Mr. Rozowski, if you can give us your name and address for the record.
Sure, Robert Rozowski, living at 29 Wald Road, off of Elliot Street.
Welcome.
Thank you, can I proceed?
Yes.
Well, good evening, uh, I come before you as a representative from Affordable Inclusive Milton, or AIM is our acronym. In compliance with the MBTA Community Deals Act, we are in support of Milton moving ahead to engage consultant services as part of a planning process, and to submit an action plan to the State Department of Housing and Community Development in a timely basis. The planning process will provide all Milton residents with the ability to evaluate the zoning possibilities, as well as assess its benefits. AIM believes that enabling zoning for multifamily buildings near transit with Mil, within Milton is a good thing. As among its benefits, it'll decrease use of polluting vehicles for community, will provide a level of greater affordability of homes just by increasing housing supply, and will enable some Milton senior residents to downsize and move to smaller units and stay within the town. We look forward to working with the Planning Board and other town bodies to bring this act into fruition into Milton, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Robert, thank you. Any other hands, anyone else like to speak this evening? Seeing none. I think we can move to our, to begin our public hearings. And I do see, um, Mike Nosa and Michael Modestino, um, but I am wondering, um, if it would be okay with them if we just started with the 1200 Brushhill Road, because I think this is going to be a very quick one, um, and that way, Ned doesn't have to stay on, so. Ned, did you want to, um, we can open the public hearing for 1200 Brushhill Road Scenic Road Permit.
I brought Ned up and I've also brought, uh, Branch Lane, the tree warden, up, although he may not have noticed the promote to panelist button, but we'll make sure Branch gets up here.
Great.
Good evening and thank you, my name is, uh, for the record Ned Corcoran, I am an attorney here in Milton representing, uh, Brushhill Care Center, located at 1200 Brushhill Road. This is a sort of a, I think a second effort to start a public hearing under the scenic road bylaw, it's a little bit of a compute, confusing process, and we didn't kick it off the right way the last time, and, uh, we thought we'd get there this time. The, 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 the scenic road bylaw application arises from the removal of some elements of stone wall at one of the site entries, plus the removal of some trees that were dangerous and dying, uh, but were done without reaching out to the DPW, um, to, to take a look at them and remove the trees, they went ahead and removed them themselves. So, and we had a site walk with, um, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, STATs, Shea Tree Advisory, uh, and others, um, last spring, either March or April, I forget the date. And we, uh, slowly took our, sort of took our time putting together some ideas about how, what to do, we met finally with STACK and Branch Lane on December 9th, uh, December 7th. We met with the Historical Commission, um, this past Monday, the 9th. We have some comments to, um, absorb from the planet, from the historical commission relative to proposal to replace the wall. And we would go before the Conservation Commission next Tuesday. Both the Conservation Commission and STACK and Branch, as the tree warden, have jurisdiction over the removal of those trees that were within the town's layout and/or within 100 feet of the, um, the wetlands that are across the street. Substantially away, but there, there are two, two of the trees were within the 100-foot setback. So, um, we had a good outcome with Branch and STACK, we've agreed to a, a tree replacement, um, of four trees, two inches caliber for each tree that had been removed. We need to go before the, uh, Conservation Commission to confirm, and one of those trees is within the Conservation Commission jurisdiction, there are four, total of four trees that were removed that are within the town's jurisdiction, either within the layout of Brushhill Road or within the 100-foot setback. One of the trees is in both. So, STACK has come up with a recommendation based on, um, Branch's approach, uh, to replace in kind with four trees per tree removed, all trees to be re, replaced within the property and away from the edge of the roadway, so that there would be a, a better opportunity for the trees to survive. And then, uh, the Conserv, Conservation Commission will review and approve, uh, the replacement, um, hopefully of one of, of, one of those trees and as well as the fourth tree within its jurisdiction, so. Based on the need to go before the Conservation Commission, based on comments that we received from the, from the Historical Commission relative to the, um, to the, uh, the, the design of the, of the wall replacement, uh, I would request that we continue this hearing to February 9th, so that my client has a time, so that we get through the, the conservation process next Tuesday. Uh, and the, and the, and the, this board has the advised, advice of the Conservation Commission with respect to the tree replacement, and then my client has time to, uh, reevaluate the design for the, uh, stone wall replacement.
Okay, board members, um, is that amenable to everyone to move it? It seems to make sense, so. Okay, if I could entertain a motion to move the public hearing for 1200 Brushhill Road Scenic Road Permit to, uh, the date of February 9th.
7:05?
At 7:05. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second, second.
Thank you, um, a roll call, Cheryl?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ned.
See you all again soon.
Yes, take care. Okay, thank you, so now we can introduce our team, um, oh, and Branch Lane did have his hand up, so I'm sorry, did Branch?
Yeah, yeah, I know, just a comment, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is a comment for Ned, um, we have some warranty money that, uh, the, the applicant is going to supply to us to guarantee the, uh, the survival of the trees, but I just wanted Ned to be aware that I would like to have him put together a contract with the town to ensure that the, uh, trees are planted as we have specified. So if Ned is still there, that's a, just a note for him.
Branch, I think he's skedaddled pretty quick, um, so.
Yeah, we can get that message.
Yeah.
I can ca, I can catch him, uh, by phone or email, not an issue.
Great, thank you so much, Branch, sorry, just saw your hand go up. Okay, so now, uh, we can introduce the team from 10 Bassett Street, Milton Marketplace, um, and open the public hearing for site plan approval for the second floor patio enclosure.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, how are you, uh, Madam Chairperson and members of the Planning Board? My name is Mike Modestino, I'm an attorney in Braintree, and I represent the, uh, McNosa 1983 Family Trust in the Milton Marketplace. Uh, Michael McNosa, my client, is, is also on the Zoom tonight, he can answer any questions that you may have. We asked the contractor to be present, Anthony Macciore, I'm not sure that he, he is on, uh, the Zoom. We'll, we'll, I, we'll see if he can join, what, what the, uh, applicant is seeking to do is seeking to enclose an existing patio area on the second floor of the building. is seeking to enclose an existing patio area on the second floor of the building. Uh, there's an enclosed area currently there and the applicant is seeking to enclose it with uh, sides and, and a roof and windows. And the purpose of this is so that the patrons of the Milton Marketplace, the, the employees and the, and the businesses that are involved in the Milton Marketplace would be able to go out there and enjoy a meal, have a cup of coffee and uh, be able to do that year round. Uh, they're obviously not able to do that now. Uh, the people from the plate on the second floor, uh, this would be a, a big and thing for them to be able to have this option available to them. The enclosed area would be approximately thirty-three by thirty-four. There would be some roof overhang, so the floor area wouldn't be that great. Thirty-three by thirty-four is approximately one thousand one hundred and twenty-two square feet, but the actual area will be less than that. Uh, as far as lighting is concerned, there would be no additional lighting. Uh, there would be lighting in the interior of this enclosure, but no additional lighting outside. Uh, in fact, there may be some, some uh, lesser lighting than there already is there. Uh, there was a compressor in the patio area as it existed. That compressor's been moved. Uh, it took up about a fourth of the area and that gives some more room in the, in the contemplated area. I think that it would be a benefit to uh, to the public at large, and I think it would be a benefit to the patrons and the employees of the Milton Marketplace i- if this was approved. My client had applied for building permit with uh, Mr. Prondak in the building office and he indicated that he needed us to, to go before the Planning Board uh, to get an indoor site plan, and that's why we're here. He also indicated that we needed to go before the zoning board of appeals and request a special permit uh, to prove that the proposed change is no more detrimental to the surrounding area and that would currently exist. That, that is pending. We actually filed that application before this, but they have not set it up for hearing. Um, so that is it in a nutshell. Uh, certainly any questions about the enclosed area and the design, uh, we could a- address and answer. Thank you.
Thank you. And could you repeat the name of your contractor? I'm just looking through the audience to see if there's um, anyone that we could let in for you.
Anthony Maggiore.
He said, he, he said he's on and watching, but he can't seem to get in.
He can't get in. Okay.
Is he, is he on the phone? We have one phone number.
He said, I'm listening on the meeting if there's any questions. Uh, so I don't know if he's on the phone or if he's, I'm not sure where he is.
Is the phone at zero five five?
It is, yes.
Member? Okay.
All right, let's see if we can.
We can bring him in to be able to speak or allow him to speak, so.
Yeah, I, I don't know how this works on the phone. I just pressed the allow to talk button, so hopefully that gave him a uh, a prompt to.
Great. Terrific. All right, well, thank you and welcome, and it looks like a very exciting project, so we're happy to be hearing about this tonight. Did, are there questions from the uh, other members?
Um, Meredith, I, I, I do have a question for Michael. Um, and, and Michael, you, you may and may not be able to answer this. It just pertained to the seating. Um, I, I did see on the plans, the seating within the room itself that would be enclosed, Michael. But did I, did I see seating on the roof elevation above the enclosed room?
No, just the enclosed room itself, correct.
It's just the enclosed room, Mike? Okay, okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that. I guess what, what can, what, the reason I, I note, Mike, when you look at the, let's see what plan this is, um, D one point two, enclosed roof patio. And I just want to make sure that I'm not, that I'm interpreting your drawings correctly. And on that plan, it looks like there are four tables with four seats at each table. Where is that? Because that calls, that's, that's identified on the plan as the roof patio.
You know what? That's the existing floor plan.
I apologize. Okay.
That's what, that's what, the way, way it's currently, um.
Okay, I apologize. I'm good. Thanks for the clarity. I'm good.
Essentially, it's the same space that exists now. We're just looking to cover it and, and, uh, and, and put windows in. Uh, that can obviously be open and closed depending on the weather and be able to have access to the space uh, all year.
Well, Mike, if I spent some time there, I wouldn't have asked that question, right?
At least.
I'll get, I'll get up on the patio. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the board? Cheryl, did you have any questions?
Excuse me, no questions, no. Uh, straightforward to me. I understand the drawings. Um, and uh, I, I have no objections, you know, to what's proposed.
Yeah. Maggie?
No, um, I was, my only question was, was there any, um, anybody from the neighborhood who might have any um, concerns or any input?
We haven't gotten any um, correspondence from anyone in the neighborhood. Um, the project was noticed, um, just like any other site plan approval, so.
If there is anyone who's on who would, you know, please feel free to raise your hand if you have any questions from the public. Um.
So Meredith, I will just add a commentary, if I may.
Yeah, sure.
Um, you know, I, I, I'm a regular patron of the businesses at the Milton Marketplace and I value um, their being in Milton and uh, the other, all of the businesses that are there. So, um, I see this as a part of their continued success and um, if doesn't impose any um, undue burden on the neighbors, I think it would be a great addition.
Yeah, and I was just gonna say, um, I think adding um, accommodations that make the customer experience uh, more comfortable is always um, a good business practice. And I too think Milton Marketplace is a true asset to the town. Um, particularly during these times when independents um, are struggling to stay open and to remain competitive. So, um, I too support this application.
And I'll just.
Meredith, I, I will, I will, um, if, if you don't, uh, thanks for letting me jump in. I feel the same way. I, I think uh, it's a great business. Uh, your business is, Mike, it's a great business. I mean, everybody that comes to Milton talks about, you know, how special it is to have uh, your business down there. And I think it's terrific. It's, it's another place that a residence can go and stay in town and have a dining experience. And I'm in favor of it too. I think it's a great project.
And I'll just follow up with um, agreeing with my fellow board members. Um, I, I think the Milton Marketplace has been a really good neighbor um, to the community. Um, everything they've done, you know, being sensitive with the expansion of the parking, you know, doing some really nice quality landscaping. Um, everything, you know, really is done with um, thought and care. And um, and I think this actually will improve the, the aesthetic, aesthetics of the building. I think it's actually going to be a prettier building, an entryway for you. Um, I just have a couple of small comments and um, you know, I think we're, you know, looking forward to approving this. Um, question on the windows. Um, this is just something that I noted that um, I know over where dependable cleaners and where you have your offices, um, you have sort of, you have um, windows with divided light on them. And it, to me, this is such a classic look. It lends itself to having something with at least maybe a, um, it has a horizontal, you know, the windows, um, which I know you're trying to keep in keeping with the rest of the building, but um, you know, something that would make it look a little less seventies, sixties, seventies. Um, is if you did, at least in the upper pane, um, had a vertical divider there, I think would really add to the aesthetic of, of your building. Um, and I also, I love kublas. Um, I know your architect's not here. Um, I think the, the kubla that he has designed um, could be a little bit wider at the base, uh, maybe not so tall and thin, but giving it a little bit more girth um, and substance would act, actually make the, just um, add to the impressiveness of, of the entryway and sort of the classic look of the building. But I think it's a beautiful design. I, I think it's going to incorporate nicely into the rest of the building and um, I, I just would have those two comments if that's possible to do. Um, I think it would, it would uh, just um, elevate the building um, architecturally, so.
I appreciate the thoughts. Uh, thank you, Meredith.
Thank you.
And also Meredith, sorry, just as a side note, I just want to um, say um, thanks, I think both to Tim and to the applicant. I think um, the, the, the site plan submission form that you guys um, filled out um, and was provided for us, I think it's really helpful. And um, I appreciate the time and effort that Tim took in creating this form and that um, the applicants took in filling it out with such care. So, thank you.
I, I, I can only take credit for, for managing Josh, um, who, who did that. Um, and, and I appreciate this uh, this, this applicant for kind of being our, um, our, our test subject on that. Um, hopefully, um, we've got some site plan approvals coming up that are going to be a little bit more complex. And I think, um, you know, that form will really um, help everyone uh, review those. But I, again, I do appreciate the applicant um, uh, doing something new, um, and, and piling that for us. And, and I'm, I'm glad, Maggie, I appreciate uh, your comments. Uh, we're, we're trying to make this a little easier for everybody.
Great, yes. Absolutely. Um, I'm just looking to see if there's any other hands. Um, if anyone else would like to speak, um, I think we might be prepared to close our public hearing. Are the board members uh, ready to close the public hearing? I'm not seeing any other hands up.
All right, and I, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Rich. Okay, roll call. Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Uh, Rich?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And with that, um, can I have a motion to approve the uh, ten Bassett Street Milton Marketplace site plan approval for second floor patio enclosure?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Oh, second.
Great, roll call. Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great. Thank you.
So I will, um, I'll draw up a decision document. Um, Michael, I, I may just run that by you, just to make sure everything is, is crossed and dotted. And then um, we can review that at the next meeting. And let's not forget to authorize me to sign it. Um, sometimes I forget to remind you to do that and it becomes a pain for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it, guys.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
You too.
Thank you. Okay. Great. Nice to have those. Good. Improvements to our business districts. Um, so now we can move on to our new business. Um, review of the Milton Woods Special Permit Amendment request uh, and vote if we determine um, on a minor amendment. Tim, do you want to tee that up?
Yeah, so I'm going to elevate uh, Josh Pompulis. Um, forgive me if, if, if I mispronounced that. Um, so it just, just kind of by, by way of, of explanation of exactly what we're doing here. Um, the um, Woodlot Drive, the Pulte Project, the former town farm site, um, is a cluster subdivision. Um, it, it, it looks like a regular subdivision, but it's, it's a creature of special permit as opposed to subdivision approval. Um, i- if it was a normal subdivision under our normal zoning, um, things like this where there's a setback or a, or, or other type of height or other issue. Um, you know, we'd go to the zoning board of appeals, but because the special permit effectively kind of creates the dimensional restrictions on the project. Um, you know, the planning board as the special permit granting authority kind of acts as the appeals board. Um, the, um, the, the special permit for Woodlot Drive, I'll, I'll open it up in a minute, but um, it, it does set out um, setback restrictions um, from the front side and rear. And um, Mr. Pompulis is going to present um, his, his proposed project. He's got a patio and a pergola um, that um, encroach upon the side setback. And so, um, you know, rather than if this was the board of appeals, they would grant a variance and that's its own kind of special thing. Um, you know, because it's the planning board and it's a special permit, uh, what the board is doing here is amending the special permit. So, um, one of the final, um, the final sections of that special permit deals with the amendment procedures. And it's a typical amendment procedure that we see in a lot of, um, in a lot of, Cheryl, you, I got distracted by your hands. Um, do, do, can I, you want to?
No, finished with you, but before we go into the presentation though, I just want, I do have a question. It's more like procedure process type question.
Um, there, there's, there's, there's two types of amendment to the special permit. One is a substantial amendment. Um, if someone came in and, and wanted to put up a new lot on Woodlot Drive, that would be a substantial amendment uh, to the special permit. Um, we would hold a public hearing. Um, we would notice it. We would have the sort of the, the whole, um, the whole process. For, if the planning board determines that a proposed amendment is a minor amendment or an insubstantial amendment, then the board gets to decide how it wants to proceed. Um, you can vote on it and approve it. You could decide that you do want to notice it and have a more formal proceeding. You can kind of do whatever you want. Um, so the, 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 the task at hand tonight is to sort of, A, make that determination, is this a substantial or an, or an insubstantial amendment? And then if you see fit, approve it or disapprove it, or take whatever other action um, you, you think you need to do. Um, so Cheryl, you can, if you have a question.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, the question had to do with this. The, the setbacks obviously apply to all parcels and this would be an amendment that's for a particular parcel. Is that right? So this wouldn't be something that's applied to all parcels then as an amendment? I just want to kind of understand that mechanism.
So that's up to you. Um, you know, it is your special permit, right? Um, my, my, you know, my, my suggestion and my recommendation would be to take it as it is, as a single, um, you know, a single project. Um, i- if only because the board hasn't kind of, I, I suspect hasn't looked at the implications of changing those setback requirements for every house. Um, so that would be my recommendation. And, and then, you know, a decision document can be crafted um, and, and really kind of focused to focus on this um, individual parcel. Um, Cheryl, I think you might have been the, I, I don't even remember if you were around. Do you remember we had a couple at Home Inc? We had a couple like Dex and then whatever. And, and I think at that point, the board made a decision and said, you know, let's amend this site plan approval whole hog so that, um, you know, you know, this is a typical thing that people tend to want to do. Um, you know, but they took the time to kind of look at the implications of that. I, I just remember that being a sort of a widespread conversation. Um, but I think, you know, given this is the first of this type of thing that we've seen out of this um, development to, you know, just take it as it is um, on an individual basis. And I think, you know, as the years go by, if, you know, we start to kind of spread our wings a little bit on Woodlot Drive and, and, and see that maybe we want some, you know, some, some different regulations, then, you know, we can talk about that on a wider basis.
Okay, so I just wanted to be clear. So we're going to be looking at this tonight as a um, potential amendment for a particular parcel. That's the way we're looking at it, is my understanding? Okay. Because that's the way I looked at all the materials that came in, because it didn't, we didn't have, you know, an opportunity to think about it for other lots. So I just want to make sure we're not um, that we're very focused on what we're looking at. Okay, thanks for clarifying.
So, so with that, um, I'll ask Josh, um, if it, or do you have the, your materials up? Are you comfortable sharing them? I can also share the screen. Um, but it may make sense for you to have control of it.
All right, I think I do. Um, can you hear me well?
Yep.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you so much. I, I'm sitting here with my wife and I want to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to um, present um, our request for a minor approval of the special amendment to allow us to install a pergola over the existing um, outdoor kitchen that we, we have. I'm, I'm new at this then, so you're going to have to walk me.
All right, um, you, you, you tell me which of these, which of these drawings you want me to show first, because there's a bunch of them. You gave us a lot of material.
The drawing for exhibit A, the site plan, that'll be the first one.
Uh, Exhibit A is actually the letter from uh, the homeowners association. Is it the, uh, let me, let me?
The site plan from uh, Machanda.
Okay. I got it.
It may have been exhibit A to the.
No, 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 let me, uh, let me bring this up. This one?
I'm not seeing, yes. Did you see it? Yeah, that's that one. If I. If I can. If I can point you to the towards the. Left corner where the 100 feet wetland buffer is. So this is the area where we want, we already built the outdoor kitchen. Now, on the inside, yep, that's where you are. This is the area where the outdoor kitchen is already up. It's a 10 by 15. As you will see behind that, the 100 feet wetland buffer. We, because of the restrictions and easements and specifically that 100 feet wetland buffer. We were very restricted as to where exactly we can put the outdoor kitchen. So we were able to put it there and. My wife and I decided that having a pergola over the the kitchen. Area, it will provide our family, our friends and neighbors an opportunity. And it had, you know, summer to be out there and enjoying our time in the backyard. If we were to move that outdoor kitchen. One foot or more to the right side, we will be over the wetland buffer, which we. Didn't want to run the file. At that corner. It is our understanding that if we put the pergola over the kitchen where it is. Although on the drawing, you see the pergola will be about three feet towards the, towards the end to the side lot. Actually, the kitchen we put out there, it's a little bit more than, it will be a little bit more than three feet. I took the measurement myself. I think on that left corner towards the end, it will be about five feet or more. And on the front side of it, it will be about eight feet to seven, eight feet. Towards the side lot. We discussed this with the. HOA, which we obtained the approval and our neighbor was gracious enough to also. Provided us letters in support of our request. The pergola itself will be very small. It will be about eight and eight, eight point, eight point eight by 11 feet. And it will be sitting right on the kitchen area. Where we just showed, I'm not sure if we provide a sample, if you can open the last one, the last PDF. This is what the, this picture is a little bit way much bigger than what will be installed over the the kitchen area. But this is what it will look like when it's, when it's done. I'm not sure if there are any questions that I can, we can answer for the board. Will be more than happy to.
Are there any comments or questions from fellow board members?
I'll make a comment.
Yes, please.
Let's take Rich raise his hand right at the same time.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead. You go.
Okay. I think that, given the unique geometry of this site, given the wetlands. And given the support of the HOA and the neighbors. That granting an amendment to the special permit for this purpose makes sense. So I would be in support of it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Hey, Rich, go ahead. Yes.
All right, thanks. I agree with what Cheryl said. The only other question or that I'd ask maybe for you, Tim. It sounds like there's a discrepancy then on on measurements on the drawing. Does that mean drawings? Does it matter that would drawings need to be, like, do they have to reflect exactly what it should be? Because I it sounded like maybe there was some, some issues with. Three feet and five feet, excuse me.
I I may want to talk to the building commissioner about this. You know, because I I think it's it's a survey plan that we've got that says three feet. You know, if if, you know, maybe maybe the grasp settled in a certain way and Josh got to five feet, I don't know. But I, but I think generally. For 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 this, for this purpose, I would look at the sort of the, if if you're comfortable with three feet and it turns out to be five feet, that's a bonus. And then, you know, on on a larger, you know, on an actual kind of, you know, significant building project. You'd want to have an as-built that reflected the kind of the conditions on the ground. I I don't know if this project rises to that level. I mean, you're certainly within your rights to condition approval on that. But I think just, you know, generally, you know, if if you approve the dimension you're comfortable with and it comes in. You know, obviously, if it exceeds that, then we have a problem. But if it's going to be within that. I think you're you're in the clear.
Yeah, my my suggestion is that we wouldn't condition it and we just go by what the drawing says that we don't do any additional work. Especially because it sounds like folks are happy with what it already said. Or at least, Cheryl, you were. It sounded like not to speak for anybody else.
Sean or Maggie, did you have any comments?
Yeah, unfortunately, I take a slightly different view than Rich and Cheryl. I believe that this development. Involved so many departments and so many committees and staff members and residents. It's really was a very, very, very special piece of property. And it's really unfortunate that it wasn't protected and preserved. And I think the special permit process. Was really deliberative and very thoughtful. And I think all sides. Had input and the plan was what was what we ended up with. And I believe that I would be doing a great disservice to all those residents and. Board members and committee members who participated in this process and ended up with this, this plan. I don't think the 100-foot buffer area is a burden. It's a protection of really what was destroyed and what was not protected. My fear is if we support the erosion of of the buffer area on this property. We will be setting a precedent so as to allow the future erosion of others. And pretty soon, there won't be any buffer area at all.
Well, Maggie, just just to be clear, the the. The project is violating the setback requirement on the property line in order to avoid being in the wetland buffer zone. So it's 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 out of the wetland buffer, but it's within the setback on the property line.
Okay, so then, but why is it needed then? I thought.
10 foot off the side side.
Yeah, because because the structure is considered to be a building and the special permit for you can't put a building in the setback. So that's why the building commissioner sent it this way.
So it's it's not in the 100-foot buffer?
No.
Correct.
It's just a hun, it's just on the side?
Yeah.
Yeah, what it does is the the 10-foot requirement, setback requirement on the side. The pergola, if it's installed as it's shown on the plan, will only allow a three-foot setback at at the corner that's nearest to the property line. So we're, we're, we're giving relief of seven feet at that corner of the set of the 10-foot setback requirement.
Okay, because when I was reading the narrative, it said that the parcel is burdened by a 100-foot buffer.
Can I just add a little context to Maggie for your point here on this?
Yeah, sure.
I was on the board when this permit was deliberated and granted. And it came in as a cluster application, a cluster development. And that was so that the lots were made, you know, smaller so that as much open space could be preserved. And so that did make perhaps some of the lots a little more difficult to work with. And so that's one of the reasons that I, you know, we, there, there were not actual floor plans for every house at the time that it was developed. And so as the board didn't review individual site plans. So we couldn't necessarily test out whether there were going to be some problems with these lot layouts or with these setbacks. And so, given that the intent was to make the lots. As small as reasonable for the houses and preserve more open space, I'm not surprised that there might be a potential conflict like this that came up. And so I just wanted to give you that background.
Okay, so that is definitely helpful and as long as. I think that that the protective buffer isn't being sacrificed. And it is just on the side, then I, then I think it is, it's okay. But, you know, I really think, you know, it's, it's our responsibility to protect the character of the town and. And and it's protecting really every square foot because everybody's lots are becoming much smaller. So I I think it's, they're pretty houses. You know, it's a pretty neighborhood to to live in and. You're fortunate to have the Blue Hills all surrounding you. And I just hope that you and the neighbors up there continue to appreciate all the wildlife and all the trees. And 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 I hope that the buffer isn't. Sacrificed moving forward.
Thank you, Maggie. Sean, a comment?
Sure. It's, it's a beautiful neighborhood. I happened to drive by or drive through it about a week ago just to see the progress and the development and. And what remains to be built. From what I can see in the file that we have. It's, it's, it's all support that was in the file. The association has has supported what you're doing. And and your neighbors have supported. And I don't, I'm not familiar with the neighbors that wrote letters of support. Are they your direct butters?
Lot five, Mr. Pachiri. That's, that's the, that's the lot that our pergola next to. And on the right side. Patrick Zhang and Kenix Wang, that's the other lot which is on the right side, which the pergola will not affect.
Okay. On the proposed site plan, Lot six looks like it's on the left-hand side as you look at the site plan.
We are, we are Lot six.
We're Lot six.
You are Lot six.
I'm, I'm sorry.
We're Lot seven.
We're Lot seven.
Lot six on the left.
My apology, Lot six is Mr. Pachiri.
On the left.
On the left, which where a pergola will directly affect it. And Lot eight is on the right side.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I got them wrong.
That's fine, that's fine. I, I, I don't have any issue with your, with your application, given that you have support from those that could be most affected. And that the association. Which in in my mind, the association is protecting the interest of everybody. And and my interpretation of the letter of approval from the association is that. That represents the entity that's responsible for protecting everybody, granting their consent. So. I, I mean, I recognize the hardship of the 100-foot buffer. I can see clearly. You know, the limitations that you have. I I do not have any issue, Meredith, with our applicant's request.
Great. And I would agree with the other board members. It's a beautiful home. I drove by to take a look. Just lovely. And I think the pergola that you've selected is is very tasteful. And will enhance your property and it will not be a hardship. And it was helpful to see the supporting letters from both of your butters as well as the Neighborhood Association. So that gave me comfort to feel, you know, that giving an approval would not be objected to by the neighbors. So. With that, I think we're ready for a rule, a motion. If somebody would like to make a motion.
I have a question. So the motion and the amendment, we don't actually have language, right? So we're going to have this be like the first amendment to the special permit. Tim, is that right? And then it was.
And make it specific. I I think we should definitely make it specific. That we are granting a a minor amendment to the property at 26 Woodlight, Woodlot Drive. Who are requesting to construct a patio, actually.
I'm sorry, Meredith.
The patio is already built, so it's the pergola.
I think it has to be an amendment to the setback requirement, but only applicable to this lot. And it would be. An amendment. That allows for the installation of the pergola per the materials that are submitted. Right, so.
Yeah.
I think it has to be that specific in order. To be the minor amendment, right?
Right. Tim, does that language sound good to you?
Yeah.
Do you want to add anything to that?
I I would, I would say the 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 motion would be to approve a minor amendment to the Woodlot Drive Special Permit. To allow the construction of a pergola on Lot seven. Within the side setback as shown on. We can reference the specific. Specific sheet and and date on the plan.
Okay.
Just a comment. It sounds like, it doesn't sound like you're doing this, but I like the idea of the specifics, so I'm on board with it. The only thing is I see that they've got like a named product. I I let's, I wouldn't suggest us not do that, right? Because what if he decides he wants to change it to someone else? Because we've been there before.
Yeah, I don't think the motion needs to have.
Okay.
And 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 what I'll do is is again, you know, write up a brief decision document that the board can review at its next meeting.
Okay. And Tim, do we need to specify that this would be attached to their special permit? Because it would have to be filed and. This amendment to the special permit. So if anyone's looking in the future, this should be attached, correct?
Are you saying, you're saying to record it?
To record it, yeah.
You can do that.
Or is that not necessary with a minor? I just.
Well, it says it on, on your document. That the special permit recorded, right? Or are you talking about just a recorded permit, not that you're recording this one?
I think, so again, this, the 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 motion to approve doesn't need to get into these questions. We can, we can write that into the decision document. I'll consult with town council and see what he advises.
All right.
I will say that we were a little inconsistent as a board on 131 Elliott Street. And so when you go back and you look years down the road and maybe a different composition of board members. You know, how was an amendment handled? It is, and if staff change is over, you know, having it recorded is everybody can find it in the same place. A buyer of that property, the buyer next door if that property sells, you know. So I do think there is value to having it recorded. And certainly, we can discuss that at the next meeting, but I would advocate for it.
So we have a motion on the floor, I believe, or do we have?
I'm there, Tim said it.
All right, and is there? Second, and are we authorizing Tim to sign on our behalf?
Well, once we've got the, you'll have to review the decision language next week, so you can, you can do that next time.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so a second, I think, did I hear? Rich?
Yep.
Okay, roll call, Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great. All right, Josh, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. Enjoy your pergola. It's beautiful.
Thank you, we will.
Don't put it up just yet.
Yeah.
We won't. I've been waiting. We'll continue to wait. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now, next on our agenda is the review of the Milton Farmers Market CPC. Application and whether or not we want to, to vote to support this. And Tim, do you want to introduce this? Or say anything about this?
Yeah, sure. So. So it's, it's CPC season, which is nice. These are, it's, I I know how hard CPC was and like this is. These are, it's, I I know how hard CPC was and like this is like the the actual fun part. There's some really, really great projects that we're able to get moving. So this is really great. But it's it's a very, very, very fierce competition and everyone wants to get a leg up. So the the Milton Farmers Market and the Friends of Milton Recreation, which which I think may be a new, a new nonprofit group that's out there, is proposing a a sort of a design and engineering study. The the background here is that the farmers market has been at Wharf Park, which is if you're, you know, hopefully everyone's familiar. It's if you're going down Wharf Street, it's to your left, there's a big, Meredith can tell me what type of tree it is right in the middle. You know, and then, you know, further beyond that is the the MBTA parking lot. The farmers market has been there for a very long time. It's a really treasured part of the community, I think a really integral part of the town civic life. It provides, you know, space for people to get together and obviously, you know, it's it's a farmers market, so all that good stuff. And it really becomes a hub of activity down in an area that we are very much interested in and activating and continuing to be a a good part of of town civic life. The the farmers market is not, I don't want to speak for them too much, although I think their application makes makes the point. There are some issues with that site as it relates to the functioning and the operations of the farmers market. The 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 slope of the park is 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 a little too pitched. Some of some of their older clients, some of their, you know, customers who may have mobility issues, have a hard time navigating around the stalls. It causes causes some issues sometimes with setting up the stalls. The 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 tree roots are, you know, causing a tripping hazard. So all of this to say that, you know, they've entertained, you know, the possibility of of trying to find a new location for the farmers market that doesn't have, you know, all these, all of these issues. But, you know, before that happens, I think they wanted to, again, do this sort of design and and survey study to see if there's a way to improve circulation, whether it's through pathways or regrading or, you know, whatever improvements they can make to the park that that make it, you know, a little bit more functional for them as a farmers market. Obviously, it's a town park, so it's got to work for the town as well. And and my opinion is, you know, the farmers market is once a week, you know, a couple of months out of the year. But if that space can be made more functional for similar type pop up events, it's 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 all to the good. You know, the the, if it's a problem for a customer of the farmers market, it's a problem for someone walking to and from the MBTA parking lot or, you know, having a picnic in that park. So, you know, it's it's effectively providing a design study for the town, you know, that could potentially lead to further improvements to the park. So that's what they're proposing. They're looking for as much support as they can get. And they've asked, they've asked the planning board for, you know, for support. So that's that's where we are.
Was everybody able to sort of review their their application that was sent out, the CPC? It is just for a study at this point. And any comments or questions for Tim?
I just have I I'm supportive of the farmers market and supportive of some study here. But I'm wondering, since we don't, we don't have the other applicants, you know, who are looking for CPC funding for open space in parks before us. I don't, I don't have a way of judging one over the other. So I don't know that we're being asked to tipper, to 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 prefer one over another. But I, what I would say is I would be supportive of this effort at the landing and of the farmers market and in improvements to this park. But I wouldn't want to necessarily prejudice any other application that might be before others, you know. So because we haven't heard them, we haven't seen them, you know. So so that, that's my comment.
Do you have any, sorry, Meredith, does Tim have any response to that?
Yeah, so so what I I I think it's a fine point. You know, what I'll say is, you know, it is, you know, it's 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 competitive. You know, I I think that, you know, there's there's only a certain amount of money to give out and and, you know, everyone's kind of jockeying for position. You know, these are the folks that that specifically sought out the planning board's, you know, support. So, you know, I I don't think it would be necessarily inappropriate for for the planning board to lend or not lend support. You know, but it does bring up, you know, a little bit of a a quandary or or question of, you know, in the future, has the is, is the planning board interested in having, you know, a more, formal is not the right word, but a more kind of systematic approach to this? Like, do we want to, you know, take, take some time in a meeting and and go through all? I mean, it's, I think it's too late for this round, but in in future rounds, do we want to like go through the whole list and and, you know, give the thumbs up or thumbs down or or offer commentary to the CPC? I think it might actually be valuable for that group. And it would kind of, you know, take away, you know, this kind of like, I I I'm I'm working with some other committees and applicants, you know. My department's not taking any position on any applications, but I'm trying to sort of put people in the right direction. And everyone's kind of scrambling around for these support letters. So it may take a little bit away from that kind of anxious kind of race around. But I mean, in the meantime, you know, I think, you know, you've you've got a request from a group and and you can review it on the merits and and kind of make a decision based on that.
And just to add, so because I, you know, would never speak for the planning board, but I did write a letter just personally myself for the Forbes House Museum. But I think we are going to be, it's going to become more common where we are asked as a board. And I, again, would never speak for the rest of my members, but we should be, you know, prepared to maybe hear more. And it may be helpful to the committee, to the CPC committee to to hear from us when we're asked, but. Yep, go ahead, Rich.
Yep. Yeah, no, and I agree with Sean's concerns and you make really good points, Tim. I mean, my, my thought around it would be, so we have a spot on that committee through, and I'm the member this year. This past year on the, on that board, we're still at the early stages, right? So we haven't really progressed into starting to really decide where the CPC is voting. So my comment to, I guess, Tim, like my comment would be, I agree with you. I think at some point, or future years, the planning board should have an opinion. My suggestion would be that they have an opinion, especially around thoughts on, you know, we're deciding, you know, the, an advocate is deciding to put something here. And we, you know, the planning board was thinking about doing some, you know, putting thought into how that would fit into the future or would like to get involved with it. You know, there are people that are, folks that have put together applications for parks. One of the things, and this is just a personal thing, not myself on the CPC or the planning board, but I feel like we as a town need to really start thinking holistically, to take a step back at all our parks. What do we want our parks to look like into the future? What amenities should they have? Things like that. And so I do think the planning board should do some planning, like should weigh in on long term planning of those things. Not necessarily think that folks should, that we should like weigh in on one particular thing. But, you know, as a board. But my feeling is, I personally won't take an opinion on this. And I hope we don't really take a strong opinion just because there are a lot of applicants, we're at the early stages. And again, we have actually a position or a voting spot on that board through myself. So I would love to hear what folks think about all the applications. If people want, folks on the committee want to do that. I wouldn't want to see us talk about just one.
Thank you, Rich. Uh, Maggie, I think you had your hand up next.
Yeah, so I was going to ask, this was coming under the the heading of the the open, the open space. So I was going to ask what other, what other proposals are under the open space heading? That if we were going to take a position, a positive position on this, to Cheryl's point, would we be inherently taking not a, not a negative position, but no position? So I, so I just, I I love this project. I've been part of the farmers market since the first year. And so I think that it's a great asset to the town. The first year when the farmers market started, it was actually in the parking lot. And that wasn't so great because that was really hot during the summer months. So I was happy when it moved over to be underneath the trees. So I fully support the the study of this area, especially improving the access with, for people with disabilities. But I also would hope that any study and any proposal would include the protection of the existing trees and the existing open space. I would hate to see any additional impervious surfaces added to the park. I think it would be great to see the creation of, you know, gardens, like a community garden where vegetables could be grown and then provided to the food pantry. And I think it would be a great opportunity for learning and it would increase wellness and connect more people to nature. But I just want to make sure that the main goal is to keep the the space green and to protect the the existing trees.
Can I make a quick comment just on one of, one of the things you said, Maggie? Is that right? Would you mind if I step in front of you real quick? Won't take long. So one of the comments, Maggie, you had asked who else? And I don't have a list in front of me and I don't want to put Rob, I see him on the list and who's the chair on the spot. But what you also have to remember is there might be a list of folks and the CPC have, there's like an amount of a percent of that dollar amount that has to go to that bucket, but then you could put more. And so it's kind of a variable thing. There's like a guaranteed amount, but then there's a variable. And so that question has to, you have to also kind of consider kind of everything, what could they get or could they get more? So and I don't know that we're, I I don't want to, I'm not speaking for you, Meredith, but Tim, but I don't know if we're prepared to talk early about it today, so maybe we should put it on our agenda.
Yeah, Sean, I do see Rob's hand up, so maybe he could just address this question. If Sean, is that okay? If we bring Rob in and let him just address that question.
Sorry, Rob, I saw you out of the corner of my eye.
Welcome, Rob.
Hey, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm available to to answer anybody's question regarding the CPC. And I do think that in the future, it would be great to just to, you know, schedule maybe a meeting with the chair of the CPC or some members of the CPC to get some insight on the planning, on the, some of the projects that are that are more planning based, which I think would be helpful. So with that being said, I think, you know, the farmers market is a planning study. There's a few planning studies that are before the CPC that are going to come in. Tomorrow is the is the deadline for CPC applications for the funding applications. So there's eleven applicants right now. And our budget for the the CPC this year is about one, one point, one and three quarters of a million dollars, which is up for grabs. So the other open space and recreation projects that are kind of jockeying for this money are the Turner's Pond Path Improvement Project. This one that that is up before you, the Milton Farmers Market. There's a project that, which is another one, which is a planning study for a Peverly Park, which is on the western part of of Milton. For those who don't know, it's around Pope's Pond. That is also for a planning study to look at the playground at that park. The Pope's Pond Pedestrian Bridge, which is is a pedestrian bridge that connects the walking trail around Pope's Pond. There's an Milton American Baseball, which is an actual project. One other study is is a, the pickleballers in Milton are looking to see where courts could be. So that, you know, particular application two is is a planning study to look at some of the open space in town. And so that is a study that we're trying to keep vast and open so that, you know, they don't particularly pick out one certain spot that would be in town right now. And then the last one is for the LED, an LED stadium lighting upgrade, which is at Guile Field. So all in all, I think there's probably three planning studies, that this one that's before you, the Milton's Farmers Market, the Peverly Park Playground, and then, you know, the pickleball courts. And so that should hopefully kind of give you some insight. But I think in the future, it would be great. You know, we're kind of behind the eight ball right now because this is our kind of our inaugural year that we're funding these projects. So it is coming late, that we're going to have to go. The CPC has to recommend all these projects to town meeting. Town meeting needs to pass all these projects. I do feel pretty comfortable that a lot of these applicants, if we can get them to the finish line, that, you know, will will have a good amount of money to to fund, you know, a lot of these projects.
Great. Thank you so much, that's very helpful. Any other questions for Rob that, while we have him on?
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah, no problem.
Sean, you had your hand up, sorry.
Yeah, I do. I I think this is, I think this is a great initiative. But my question is probably more mechanical than anything else. The the amount of funding that was requested, if if is twenty five thousand. And you know, when I read down to the bottom of the document, that's called Wharf Park Funding, it reads at the bottom that the amount of funding requested for this initial feasibility study is twenty five thousand. Full cost of construction to rehab, rehabilitate the park will be determined by the study. Hundred percent of the study costs would be covered by the CPC funds. And bullet number C, or bullet C, reads, "The Friends of Milton Recreation consulted with two different landscape engineering slash architecture firms, both verbally stated, verbally stated that the estimated cost of the study and engineering would be twenty five thousand." And just from a matter of protocol, how does, how does this normally work? I I I know that in our case, when we're supporting use of any funds, we typically have quotes. This is verbally stated from two firms. It, it may be the correct all value. I guess I'm asking, I'm asking protocol really more than anything else as a, you know, how do we operate?
I I can answer that question, Sean. I I actually had the same exact question. I I think probably because in our business, we we get formal bids. And so it's interesting, especially with planning. I had, you know, it is a recommended, like an an estimate right now. But when we go to, you know, basically at the end of the day, we we are giving a grant request, like we're getting, we're going to do a grant for that money. We're going to need hard estimates on on that to make sure that that funding is there. But I am also going to go back to some of these, to the applicants during the review process to make sure that that, that we get, you know, hard bids back to, from design consultants or whoever, to make sure that that money is is the right estimate.
Yeah, okay, great, Rob. Yeah, that's all, I I just, I want to make sure there's a mechanism of control because although we have CPC money to spend, spend, it's a, it's effectively been contributed by the taxpayers, right? I mean, we all are contributing to that fund. So it's, it's really tax dollars that we we want to make sure it's utilized well. Great, thanks for that clarification.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I I I think we we want to make sure that that we get hard bids for a lot of these things. And as you know, and, you know, inflation's through the roof nowadays too. So a lot of the project estimates that come back, that came back early, you know, that we're also seeing costs go, go up. So we're, I'm trying to hold the applicants to to get some hard bids back to us.
Okay, okay. So in that case, Rob, before anybody was in in receipt of of that funding, they would have to prove to you that they had, they had worked the marketplace, right?
Yes, correct.
Got it, great, terrific. Thank you.
Any other comments on this? I, I actually think this is a great project. And I I think if we do vote to write a letter of support, I don't believe that the CPC would take that as any negative against any of the others who we're not, we haven't written for. We just haven't been asked and approached by them. But the, you know, I just was looking at the letter that But the um you know, I just was looking at the letter that um Richard Wells wrote um from the landing committee because there's. Multiple groups who've been studying this area down there at the landing. Um I think one thing I I liked his closing sentence. We encourage the community CPC committee to approve the this project, encourage the applicant to work closely with town staff and boards on the project. As the project progresses. I think it's really important to get community support. So if we did write a letter, it would be um public outreach. Um and um and really again, you know, I would advocate for the same the preservation of trees and the preservation of open space. But there are sidewalk issues. There are some issues that need to be dealt with, I think, from a safety standpoint down there, so. Um I think it's a worthwhile project. Um Cheryl?
Yes, while we have Rob, Rob, you um heard my uh comment with concern. About not having heard from other applicants. And I'm wondering how the committees re- um viewing these letters that they are maybe receiving on these applications. You know, how would a letter from the planning board on on this one be perceived? When the planning board wouldn't have heard from the other open space applicants?
Yeah, I I mean, I think you know, the fact that this applicant did reach out to you guys and ask for support. You know, I think goes a long way. I think applicants can, you know. They can go to any town boards or committees, so I I don't think there was a formal process, so it's kind of a. A good faith to come before your board and ask ask for it. Um and so. You know, I I think it's it's kind of up to your discretion um and whether you're not you guys want to to, you know, voice support for it. I don't think, you know, I think it will help, you know, applicants as you go through. I think I you know, it helps to get these letters of support from the community. Um in our decision process. Um so. That's that's kind of where where we're at. I think as many letters of support for different applicants, you know, it does help.
Meredith, could I could I provide? Yeah, just just one comment. I you know, for for what Rob's trying to accomplish. Um and the number of different ideas that have been put forth, I I think the group that. That does move forward to ask for support. Deserves to receive a reply from whomever they ask support from. And because others haven't or haven't yet. Um my own opinion is I don't think this particular group should be. Uh should be harmed in any way because they were first and and others, you know, haven't. So. Uh I'm I'm in support of it and you know, maybe it'll encourage others if they're in in. If they're seeking support um to act upon uh to act upon it so that they do come before us, but. Um I'm I'm I know, you know, probably like you guys all know, there are and Rob listed off the number of things. That uh you know are potential opportunities for the CPC, but I I just don't feel that this group should be. You know, should have to wait necessarily. I mean, others that may take the lead on the other things that the CPC could find it. They could be weeks or months away. So um I feel that we should respond to the people that come to us in the order they come to us.
Thank you, Sean. And Rich, I see your hand again.
Yeah, just um and I know for Robert, um Julia, um if I thought maybe you didn't ask this question, Cheryl, but I was kind of thinking. Um when you were asking whatever when asking the question you were asked. About um what the process is, literally the process for getting these um letters, Rob. Like so, for example, when folks send letters to the planning board, if they send them online, they come right to us. Um if they send them to Tim, Tim sends them to all of us. And I guess my question for you, because I don't know that I've seen any yet, but are they going into like the CPC? Dock it uh the folder or are they gonna be emailed? Are they gonna give it be emailed like right away or just like at the end? Like how are we gonna?
Yeah, so 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 right now, um I'm trying to avoid as many correspondence as we can to all the members. So your your inboxes aren't, you know, just, you know, filled up like crazy, so I'm trying to get all applicants. To get the, you know, a complete application sent to us tomorrow. However, I I will say because the time is up, time has kind of been tight, especially with the holidays and stuff, that we are giving. Um town boards and committees because it's it's often hard to get their get their support because you're meeting, you know, only so often. So we have extended that deadline through. Um I think it's the end of this month, so it's it's basically. You know, February third or so that we would we would want a letter from a border from a town border committee to. Be sent back to the the uh town planning department, so um that that would be fine. Um so we are waiting from, you know, the you the planning board isn't the only board. That is um getting requested for letters of support. So the Conservation Commission is getting is giving letters, um parks and rec. I I know four applications just went before them. Um you know, the the Historic Commission, as as Meredith mentioned. I I know that a few um applicants are going before them, so it really depends on the category for the CPA category of like where. Um these applicants go to where we would expect. So for instance, the historic preservation projects, I would absolutely expect a letter of support. From the Historic Commission. Um you know, there's a there's one community housing category and and we would want. You know, that it is the Affordable Housing Trust who's who is um applying for it, but that would probably that would be the town committee that would be before it. And like I said, I think there is three planning um and feasibility studies, so in the future, I think those applicants should really be seeking. Um the planning boards, um you know, kind of support for those studies. So you know, and and I could easily get back to the applicant too on those other two to so so it's fair just to let them know. That, you know, they could come before your before your committee or write an email to you to see if you could if you could provide a letter of support for them. Um just so that it's fair.
So and to be very clear, it sounds like what you said is um after the deadline, that's when you'll be sharing all the letters with the CPC committee?
Yep, yeah.
There you go. Okay, good. Yeah, makes sense.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, cuz one if I may ask, add one thing, Meredith.
Uh yeah, Sean, was your hand up before or is it leftover? Sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just in some of the planning um and you know, thinking about the the master plan, you know. Um the Master Plan Implementation Committee did spend a lot of time um looking at Milton Landing. But one of the things that the other things that's come up, I think in a lot of discussions and in the master plan itself is a lack of. A playground on the west side of Milton and a lack of um parks. You know, there's the Blue Hills, but sort of the neighborhood oriented playground kind of park. And so I I do get torn between wanting to say like that park that would be along Pope's Pond. Would be another um application that I it's a planning study that I think. Uh certainly, I I think warrants support as well. So I I like Rob's suggestion of giving the other two plan. Open space planning kind of applicants an opportunity to come before us as well. Um and we don't have to pick one over the other. Um we can support them all I in that in that regard. So if we're going to choose to support something, I'd like it to be such that we're not choosing one over another. But that we just like the application itself and that will let the committee. Do the hard work of having to if they have to choose one over another, do that. And so that's my suggestion.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and I was I was thinking that um, yes, I definitely think you should to Sean's point. That we need to um reply to to everyone, but Rich also sits on the board. So I think, you know, Rich could sort of um say to the committee. You know, um the planning board, you know, voiced wrote our letter of support, but um maybe. Say this is the only um applicant who actually wrote to us for our support. And sort of just say, you know, reiterate or relay our conversation here. Um just saying we're in support of this, um but not at the expense of another one.
Certainly, and yeah. Okay, so.
Actually, just comment and I'm fine if you guys if you all wanted to kind of. Put that in a vote or something and direct like that, I can do that. I just, I don't think it, I think it'd be wildly inappropriate for me to vote. Here on this though, so I would.
Yeah, Rich, you would probably have to either remove. Or or yeah, I I.
Yeah, and I don't want to refuse myself from that vote, so yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, you can just abstain. So if um it sounds like we would like to make a motion to support um this project. And uh Tim, would you be able to draft a letter? Um you know, similar to what you did with. I don't know if you drafted this letter from the landing committee or Josh did.
Yeah, we can. We can certainly do that.
Um just to.
Could you put in the fact about we really would like a study to focus on conserving trees and open space?
Uh tree preservation, it's in there, yes.
Uh it's sorry, Tim, one more thing. Um I think what we did today was fine, but if like and I don't envision because this we're running out of time. But if you were if we were gonna put a lot of things about those votes and get into the weeds of like, what do we all think about voting? I would probably not want to join that portion of the meeting because I really don't want to be inappropriate for that next. That the CPC meeting and I want to be able to go there and take part.
Great.
And I I think the the motion, I'd like it to include what we discussed, at least Maggie and I discussed. Which is um that doesn't prejudice other projects and that we would like. That our representative, Rich Beeler, um can can convey the conversation that we had to to hit the fellow CPC committee members.
Second one second. Okay, we'll call Cheryl.
All right, yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Rich, you're and I'm staying correct. No, yes, okay, so that's great. So I can work, Tim, and I can, you know, I can touch base with you on this on the draft on the letter, so. Yeah, and just mentioning, I think, the importance of public outreach um as the project goes further, but at this point, it's just a study, so. Great. Thank you. Um and I'll let Scott McKay know. He'll be very happy, so. Great. And so now we can move on to the uh next item, which is the discussion. And vote on the extension of East Milton zoning RFP deadline. Tim, do you wanna talk a minute for that?
Yep, so we put uh we put the uh the RFP um for the East Milton study out on the street. I think it was early December. I forgot the exact date that it went out. Um you know, tough time to put out an RFP because of the holidays, so. Um we we had put in a a deadline for responses of uh January sixteenth. So now I was I was reminded um about a week and a half ago um that the sixteenth is a holiday and that town hall is not open. Um this is, you know, just a peek into my world. I I print out these like printable calendar pages. Right, which are just like blank things, which is great. You can fill in whatever you want, but then you forget that the holiday is a holiday and you sort of do those things. Um so um but the other thing that came up was um. I did get uh some outreach from a firm that was very interested in responding to the RFP. Um but requested some additional time to put together a response. And so um. I think um. Hold on half a second. I think the request was to extend to February second. I'm gonna put this into my email real quick just to confirm that. Um and the the reason I'm I'm asking the board. Is um yeah, um February second. The reason I'm asking the board to consider this is because. Um we did get quite a bit of interest in um in the RFP. A lot of firms requested it. Um but you know, the the it's 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 cheap to request the RFP. I I actually don't have a very clear idea of how many of those firms are actually serious about about responding. Um I I I have I'm optimistic that we'll get at least a few. Um I I know there's at least another one that's been in pretty close contact. Um they haven't one hundred percent indicated that they're responding, but I suspect they will. But I think because, you know, in in the worst case scenario, I don't think we want to be in a situation where we put all this time and effort into this RFP. And we get no responses. Um you know, this is effectively kind of a bird in the hand. Um you know, we know we'll get at least one and and it's a reputable, you know, I that I think qualified firm, you know, we'll see what the response is. So um I I would recommend that the board um extend the deadline to um to February second. I think it's not, you know, it it doesn't put too much pressure on on the timeline, especially for the grant. Um you know, which is good for another eighteen months. Um and then I think, you know, the work of the actual. Um you know, the actual project will will actually be, you know, we'll have to look at the responses and see that people maintain those timelines, but. Um you know, that's where we are. Um and and I would recommend that the board, um you know, vote to extend.
Any comments?
Now, my only comment is, do you think February second is enough time? Is there any benefit to extending it out another week?
Um I I think I think it's enough. Um that date was a suggestion specifically from the firm making the request. Um ostensibly, if there are other firms that are um interested in responding, they they have been prepped to. To get their responses in next week. Um so you know, you know, I I feel a little funny, you know, doing it. Because everyone else, you know, is is probably almost done. Um but you know, it's it's always, you know, if you've been on these sorts of deadlines. Um it's always good to get some more time to to take some 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 third and fourth swings at it. Um so I I I think two weeks is enough time.
Yeah, there's.
I'm just questioned on the procedure, so you have to advertise that change, right?
So the way that we um administered this RFP is um. Everyone that's required, everyone that has the RFP has requested it specifically from me. Um we didn't post it. Um we we um we we put it in, the advertisement in the newspaper said, reach out to the planning director. Um the solicitation on combis said, reach out to the planning director for a copy of the RFP. Um so everyone that is interested in uh responding to this thing. I have their contact information um and have been in touch with them, um you know, about this potential vote. Um so and and I spoke with the town administrator about this as well, and I think this is the the correct procedure.
Maybe, Tim, you could follow up with some of those others. I would hate for somebody just to not know about this extension and they just say we're we're. Just so crushed with work, we we can't get it done and not know about the extensions, so.
Yeah, so what I what I intend to do is is if the if the board does vote, um you know, to extend. You know, first thing tomorrow morning, like I said, everyone that everyone that has the RFP has it because they asked me specifically for it. So I have a list of contact information for everybody. So an email blast is gonna go out to everyone saying deadline's been extended. Um you know, hopefully no one is 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 left in the in the lurch um about that, so um I I think we're we're in the clear.
Great.
I'll make a motion to approve the extension of the submission deadline to February third.
It was.
Sorry.
Maggie seconded?
Sorry, did I have the wrong date?
We might as well do it the third.
I think that's what, didn't she say the third?
I said the second, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Cheryl did say third.
I did say third, but whatever date you want it to be is what my motion is.
Let's just say, let's just say, let's just do it the second. Let's just do that.
Okay.
To the second. And that was a second, was there a second?
Yeah, can I just ask a question? Is there cuz cuz I'm not familiar with. The where all the RFP goes? Is there like a central? Registry or central location that, you know, everyone in that world looks looks to?
Yeah, so it's called the 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 portal or the database or whatever it is called combis. Um there's there's two, well, there's multiple different things. If you're doing like, there's the central register, which is for like. I I'm not, I'm gonna get over my skis if I try to do this, but there there are known places where people that are doing construction work. Or people that sell toilet paper or people that do design services. People that are doing construction work or people that sell toilet paper or people that do design services, they're checking these things all the time. And so I, I, I'll, I'll check in with town council and the town administrator tomorrow to see if we need to also update. The, um, the, the, the posting that we did on COMBIES, but it's a, it's a, an electronic web-based form. And then, you know, I, I, we've done this before on all sorts of different solicitations, and what you do is you sort of do an addendum to the solicitation that. Says, you know, here's a change or here's an extension or whatever, so this is all.
The reason I asked about that before Maggie is because sometimes a firm may see a deadline in an app, in a RFP like that. And say it's, it's a conflict, they've got something else big that that date is. But if they find out later that it was extended, they, and they didn't ask for it originally, they would never know unless it gets posted again. And so I am familiar with COMBIES and I am familiar with the central register. And normally you will see an amendment posted there, that's why I asked about that.
My second.
Okay, all right, roll call on that. Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. That is great, thank you very much to give people time to. See what they can submit. All right, now we're going to go to old, old business next. And this is the discussion of the MBTA Communities Multifamily Zoning Law. Tim sent around a draft for the DHCD required the action plan. So, Tim, maybe that's a good place for us to start looking.
Yes, let me bring that up. Yeah, so we talked about this at the last meeting, I, I provided a sort of a draft of a draft. As you hopefully saw, a lot of it is just kind of very self-explanatory kind of, you know, information. The, the two things that I think I requested. You know, specific input from the board on were regarding the, the potential locations of potential zoning districts. Which I, I, I think in this action plan are, you know, generally the transit area, and I think we also put in. Sort of the Granite Ave area near, you know, the state DPW, you are at the Park and Ride. You know, the, the understanding I think that everyone has, including DHCD, is that these are fluid, to say the least. And that, you know, I, I, I think I was very specific in my. In my language here that, you know, we've yet to do significant public outreach on any of these locations and, and are, you know, subject to change. I've, I've had conversations with other folks, with other board members about other potential locations that may, you know, may make sense. You know, we're perfectly within our rights to, you know, continue to discuss those as this process goes on. And then the other thing that I, I, I asked for input from the board on was. The question about what non-housing characteristics are important for this community to consider in its 3A zoning district. And we talked a little bit about this, you know, the, the, they, the form itself gives some examples. Walkability, bike lanes, street retail, bus connections, accessibility. I think, you know, there were some other things about transportation connections. If, if there's anything else that you want me to add to this section. It's, it's definitely easy enough to do that, and, and then I think the final thing is the timeline, and, you know, I, I, I don't think the timeline has, has changed much since the, the first draft. Basically, what I did was, you know, assume a December. Special Town Meeting and kind of back into, you know, dates from there in terms of public hearings and drafting zoning and community meetings. You know, it's. As I've been doing this and talking to people, and, and we'll talk about this a little bit more. You know, in, in, in the next item, it, you know, a, a year to do this is very aggressive. You know, on, on the state's part. I was, I was having this conversation earlier this week, there, there are two. There's two timelines for types of communities. Commuter rail and adjacent communities actually don't have to have their zoning done until the end of 2024. Rapid transit communities, which there's only a handful, Cambridge, Somerville, Milton, Quincy, Newton, Brookline. I don't know if Chelsea is in there, Revere. Their timeline is the end of, of 2023. And, you know, apart from town of Brookline, I think Milton is the only town in that group of rapid transit communities. You know, it's going to be tough sledding for everybody, but, you know, Cambridge gets to go to their city council and, you know, they conceivably get this thing done in a couple of weeks. You know, bringing zoning to town meeting is an entirely different story. You know, to say nothing of the sort of the monumental conversation that's going to happen. So the timeline is there because. You know, we want to demonstrate that, you know, if it's possible to get this thing done in a year, this is how it's going to get done. But. All of that being said, we've talked about this from the very beginning. There's a lot of conversation, there's a lot of analysis that needs to be done, there's a lot of homework, you know, so. I don't want to say that the timeline is advisory, you know, because, you know, you do want to comply and you do want to hit the deadline, but also. You know, we want to get this thing right if we're going to, you know, if we're going to get it done, and so. You know, I just want to explain, you know, to you all, if you're looking at like, oh, wow, you know, we've got to have a public hearing, it seems in, you know, a couple of months. It's to get into that timeline of the deadline and, and, you know. If, if, if that changes, that changes, and I think, you know, conditions on the ground are really going to dictate, you know, how this thing goes, so. That's the draft, it's due at the end of the month. What I would love is if, you know, if we can have a conversation, if there are any additional edits or changes or additions, we can talk about them now. I'd like to be able to get on the select board agenda next week. The, the way that I've tried to approach this is, you know, the planning board being sort of the subject matter experts to, you know, provide their input on the content of the thing. And then, you know, the select board as, you know, the town's executive body. You know, to be the one to give the thumbs up to, to actually submit to the state, and so that would be the order of operations that I'm looking at.
Great, thank you, Tim. Sean, you had your hand up.
Thanks, Meredith. I guess I, I have a couple of, I have a couple of questions. When, when we submit this application, can we submit questions with this application?
What, I mean, what kind of questions? I, I, I mean, so, so the, the, the very, the very quick answer is no. But the longer answer is, there's another forum for that, if, if we have questions of DHCD. They actually have an open inbox that they're encouraging people to, to, which I've availed myself of already. You know, so if we have questions, you know, associated with this or any other topic, you know, there's, there's a place for that.
Okay, so questions can go back with this, but there is another way to submit questions?
Right.
Okay. We, we, we may want to take advantage of that, just, just because I think there's probably an awful lot of questions, probably in a lot of communities. Where everybody's trying to understand what's been written and, and what, what it really means.
And, and, and I, I think, you know, Sean, to, to that point, I think that's, that's definitely. Yes, it, it's, it's a resource that I, I've already kind of, I, I had a question. You actually, you all gave me a, a couple of questions, I think one of them was related to affordable housing, one of them was related to. I forget, but I mean, I, I, I think that's definitely something that we can do and, you know, as there's a standing item on, on MBTA communities on the agenda for the foreseeable future. You know. Please feed me questions that I can feed to them, you know, I'm, I'm happy to do that, if you guys want to talk about it collectively.
And maybe we can, maybe we can pull up the, the form, Tim, because I, I feel like there's. And I don't know if you're limited to a certain number of characters or a certain number of lines that we can add to. Areas of other concern outside where, you know, you were referencing. You know, other things, other concerns or interest. Yes, and the non-housing characteristics, because I think there's a lot more that I would like to add. You sort of summarized a lot of, I mean, not that you, you didn't say it, but I think we could be more specific. On the.
So Meredith, if I could, if I could, if I could, I guess, contribute to this discussion, that exactly is where I was going, that 3.2 what non-housing characteristics are important for this community to consider. And we, you know, one thing that comes to mind, and we spoke about this earlier today, we mentioned nothing about open space. And, you know, maintaining open space or developing, now that might be in direct conflict with what this is all about. But, you know, I, I, I agree with you, I think, you know, this six. Is it six items that listed here? Maybe it's seven items, but I, I do feel like it's probably worthy of us thinking to see if we have other. Characteristics, non-housing, that we'd like to include here.
And I think it would, yeah, it's, it's on. I mean, you've listed on impact of rezoning on municipal services, including police, fire, schools and infrastructure. I just know one item that we had added was what is the capacity, which I would just be interested in knowing. An MBTA could maybe provide this capacity of the existing public transit to serve the needs of new residents. And estimate the reduction of automobile traffic, which could be anticipated. You know, I, I don't know how, you know, how, how closely do you think they're going to be looking at this? Do you think they're, at this point, you know? Is that something that they're, they're interested in really knowing this at this point, or?
Well, I, I, I hope they're looking at them closely, they asked us to fill this thing out, you know. So, you know, one thing, and, and so I'll, I'll, I'll add that into sort of, and, and Meredith, you know, I, I think we had that conversation more in the context of analyzing it in the scope for, for consultant services. But I do think it's worth putting into this as well, because that's, that's the name of the game is, is being able to sort of utilize transit, so. That capacity kind of needs to be there. I am, I, I haven't done it yet, but I am in. The process of trying to set up a call with the project managers at the, the, the Mattapan Trolley Transformation Project. That's the project that's kind of sprucing up the cars and, and then also kind of rebuilding the stations. I, I, I don't know how closely they're in contact with DHCD on kind of the housing angle of all of this. But I think those folks would probably have the best kind of knowledge of, you know, capacity on the Mattapan line and, and kind of what they expect their improvements to do. One thing I'll say, and, and, you know, we'll definitely want to get kind of professional help in figuring this out, but just on my own, it's a little bit frustrating on the Mattapan line. Compared to all the other lines, because. The, the way that they, the way that they record and analyze trips is kind of the fair gate, right? And there are no fair gates, right? It's the, it's the fare box on the car itself, so they actually don't have great data on who's getting on at Capen Street, who's getting on a Valley Road, who's getting on at whatever. They have good data for the entire line because, you know, people clock in at Ashmont or Mattapan, and so we know that, but. You know, the stop by stop data is not, you know, the best, but, um. So that's a conversation I want to kind of strike up with, with the T's project managers and, you know, try to build that relationship in time for, you know, a consultant to also kind of be part of that conversation. But, um, that's definitely a non-housing characteristic and we'll want to put that in the, in the plan.
So, Sean, go ahead.
Yeah, well. I'm sorry, Meredith, I just have a, probably a few more points I, I wanted to make.
Before you do that, Sean, can I just add something about the trolley here?
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, the timeline on the improvements, Tim. You know, we've been hearing about getting new cars or refurbished cars and updated stations. But, you know, those are really important to the usability. And so, you know, if you want, if this is to be an asset which we're take, to take advantage of through additional housing. I think, you know, you want to, we want to make sure that, that the commitment to getting those improvements done is there.
Yeah, I don't disagree, I don't disagree with that at all. It's, it's, it's a frustrating thing to be at, at Ashmont and seeing, you know. Half an hour to the next, you know, red line train to Park Street. You know, and we're going to be, you know, we're being asked to dump a lot more people onto that Mattapan line, so it's not just the Mattapan line, it's the whole system. You know, Mattapan train can come as fast as it comes, but if you get to Ashmont and the train doesn't come for an hour, you're out of luck. So I think, you know, the timeline on that, I, I, I think they have a little bit of a fire under them, which is good. You know, there's been a little bit more action on that Mattapan transportation project. But I think the, you know, the other good news is that, you know, any improvement to the station, any improvement to the, the, the actual rolling stock. Is, is going to, is, is going to benefit ridership existing and, and, and increased. But I think having those numbers and having that good understanding, I think is going to be.
But I think just reinforcing the commitment to the trolley improvements is, is something that we should stay. I mean, we can't even get the stairs repaired over at Milton Stop, so, I mean, you know. They, there needs to be a, a commitment, and I, I know that the select board has sued and. You know, people, our elected delegation is working on this, but it doesn't hurt us to reinforce it here. That we expect that if we're, if we are expected to do this, then we expect that the commitment to the trolley. Those commitments be followed through on in a timely manner.
Agreed.
Thanks, Sean.
Sean?
No problem at all, no, that's fine. And, and I guess I'll probably just reiterate that point. This, this whole thought process of, of adding housing is driven by the, the notion. That the rail has the ability to, to trans, to, to transport the people. And, you know, at some point, a responsible study has to be done as to what that, and I think we have to imagine they do nothing to that rail line. Because that's, that's a possibility too, I mean, of all the needs that the MBTA has. I think probably way down at the bottom of the list is improvements to this particular trolley line, that's just, that's just my.
I think they're going to have a lot of political pressure, this serves a demographic on, on the Boston side as well as the Milton side. That's underserved, and I think they'll get a lot of political pressure if they don't do what they've said they're going to do.
They may have a lot of political pressure, I don't disagree with that, Cheryl, but they have so many needs. I mean, travel, the MBTA, it is unbelievable, the needs that they have, and, and this might not be the highest need. But anyhow, at some point, there, there needs to be a study of what the capacity is of that line. And is it aligned with adding 1,200? You know, 1,200 roughly residential units to that area in the potential ridership that increases. So I guess a couple of really important. Points that I, I want to put out for discussion and something that I think would be appropriate for the, for us, for this planning board, for you, Tim. As, as our Director of Planning and Community Development, we should invite. We should host and invite the Elliot Street neighborhood. To a meeting and, and probably someplace big, so we can accompany, we can accommodate. As many people as would come in, and, and join us, but. I think it's our responsibility to listen to how those people that live in that neighborhood would feel about their neighborhood being rezoned. The, the town itself will be affected by this, there's no doubt about it, but there's no area of the town that will be more affected than the Elliot Street neighborhood, and. They deserve an opportunity to speak up either in support of rezoning Elliot Street, the Elliot Street Corridor, I guess, as, as we'll call it. Or maybe we'll hear that they're opposed to it. But that's the neighborhood that's going to be most dramatically impacted by any adoption of the MBTA Communities Act. And I feel it's our responsibility as a planning board to create the opportunity to listen to them.
I, I couldn't agree more, Tim, I, you, I'm sure, go ahead, you look like you were going to say something, Tim.
No, I, I think that that is probably, you know, if not step one, step one A after. You know, after this thing kind of gets done, because I think we've been focused on. You know, the, the, the final guidelines came out and then sort of the compliance tools came out, and then there's kind of a scramble to get the technical assistance resources in place. You know, once this deadline passes, once we get this thing out, then it's time to, you know. And, and I don't think it really depends on getting any other professional input or advice, I mean, this is a, you know, Sean, as you say, it's, you know, it's. As it's, nothing, nothing is ever simple, but it is as simple as sort of getting a big enough table, you know, for, for, for folks to come by and, you know, just start that conversation. I don't think that we need to have a. you know, just start that conversation. I don't think that we need to have a, you know, a, a really elaborate, um, you know, setup. There's going to be times where we're going to want to have a more elaborate setup with, with more information. But I think just generally, you know, education outreach and opportunity for input, you know, on, on, on both ends, I think makes total sense. So, you know, once this thing gets out, you know, we'll start working on this next week, um, you know, try to figure out what's the best venue, what's the best way to kind of do that. But I think, you know, getting that, getting that organized, um, you know, within the next, you know, couple of weeks at the latest, I think, um, you know, makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, thanks. I, I appreciate that point of view, Tim, because I feel like, uh, meet the deadlines, submit by the end of January and give the neighbors a chance to meet in February. Bring them together. Let's hear what they have to say. We may hear great support for it. We may hear a lot of people that don't support it. But it, it's, we, we need to give them the opportunity to tell us how they feel about it.
Yeah, I was going to say the, um, exact same thing. And, um, question, Tim, I had for you, because the good thing is, util, util, am I pronouncing?
Util.
Util, um, that they're ready to go, I think, um, with the mapping. Would they come, would they be willing to come and join us at a, at a meeting? And sort of a kickoff meeting with the Elliott Street corridor, just to.
I do, I don't think we have in our scope with them, a lot of public outreach participation. And, and honestly, I think, um, I think it's probably, you know, the, 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 the way that Sean kind of characterizes it is very simple. Kind of, you know, bare bones. I think it's, it'll be important for the board to be there because ultimately the board is going to be the one kind of synthesizing what we hear from the neighborhood, from other neighborhoods, from the professionals into what is the shape of this district? What are the dimensional regulations that we want to do? Um, and so feeding that to util or, or another consultant. So, um, I, I, I think it's more important for us to do this and kind of synthesize that information for the consultants.
Okay. But I do, I do agree. I think I had coffee with somebody who's very involved with, who sits on town boards, lives on Elliott Street and had no idea that this MBTA, um, guidelines were, were, uh, the, what, what's happening. So, um, in the planning process that's going to have to come. So, that's great. I think as much public outreach and just being as open as possible with this process is the best. Thank you. Cheryl, you had your hand up and Maggie next?
Yeah, I just, I feel like we're kind of not focused on the action plan and then the scope. I, I do have some very specific questions and comments on util scope. So I, I'd like if we can to, to be methodical here and, and get through the, uh, work plan and then get to the scope of work. Because, you know, we've had this on the agenda a number of times and we've talked about some of these things about community outreach a few times too. So if, I, I would like to be able to get to some votes if we can.
Yep. And Maggie, you had your hand up, please.
Yeah. So kind of the same thing. So, uh, I just wanted to talk about the action plan. So personally, I'm still really uncomfortable like submitting the plan because we have not had any formal outreach to the neighbors. But I do understand that we have to get it done to remain, um, in compliance. But I'm wondering if we're by going through the, the action plan, you know, the one point, the, one of the first questions is, um, you know, what, how many, what's a unit capacity? So I'm just wondering where the state, I know we inherited that number from the state, the state provided that. So I just wa- was wondering where the state got that housing count. And I'm wondering if, Tim, if you have been able to fact check it to make sure, um, you know, the str- the state is actually correct. Um, so that's one question. You don't have to answer. I'll, I'll just say a few things and then you can answer them all at once. And then also I'm just kind of wondering, similar to that question is like the Curtis House, which is, um, zoned for seniors. Was that included in the state's count? And, um, because I know we're not supposed to, um, the zoning doesn't allow for, um, senior housing, uh, or age restriction. So I'm just want to make sure that the, the housing at Curtis, if it was included in the state count, because, um, if it was, then we should be able to count, um, those into our, um, into our, um, unit count. Also, just to add perhaps, um, you know, the more I'm thinking about where, um, these could go, I sort of was thinking, what about like two granted apps? Did we ever possibly think that should we put that on, um, a possible, um, district? Since that has not as much impact, that location has, doesn't have as much impact on the town as a whole. And, um, also, if we vote to approve the action plan and it goes to the selectmen, um, do they have an opportunity to revise, revise it? Or are they just going to automatically approve it because, you know, this is what we put forth? And as you said, we are the zoning experts. So I was wondering if they do revise it, does it come back to us to, um, discuss? And then, um, lastly, I know, I think in March, we submitted a, a response letter, um, to DHCD with questions and comments. And I'm kind of wondering if we ever got a response back from them.
Um, I'll take those in reverse order. No, we didn't get a response to our comment letter. Um, I think the way that they got a lot of comment letters, um, and I think the way they approached it is, is, is making, you know, changes to the guidelines. But I, I don't think anyone got an individual response, um, unfortunately. As it relates to, you know, how, how the select board is going to treat this plan. You know, the, the way that I've tried to convey it to, um, to the select board and the town administrator is kind of how I described it earlier. That, you know, I've been looking to the planning board to kind of populate the content, um, of the plan. But, but, you know, because, you know, I, I'm actually just trying to navigate how this gets done, you know, as a, as a bureaucrat. You know, and, and the way that I see it is, you know, the select board's my boss, they're the executive, you know, that they need to give me the thumbs up to send things to the state on behalf of the town. So, you know, I, I, I don't think that they're necessarily going to be in a mode of wanting to, you know, edit things or change things, you know, especially given the fact that the planning board who, you know, as we said, are, you know, the, the sort of the planning and the zoning experts in town. You know, that being said, you know, it's their prerogative, um, you know, if it's, if it's a town response to, to do something like that. You know, what I can convey to them is, you know, if, if you are thinking of making changes, you know, let's, let's incorporate, you know, additional feedback from the planning board. Um, you know, it may screw around with the deadline a little bit, but, um, you know, if we want, if we want the document to reflect, you know, what we want it to reflect, then, then we'll have to do that. But I, I, I don't think it's likely that they'll, you know, put their fingers on it too much. The, um, the, 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 the previous two questions, just to sort of, and I'm going to share my screen. I wanted to take sheet, screenshot off for a minute. That 2461 number, you know, the, the fact check is, is just math. This is the MBTA Communities website, um, where they, you can look up any town and kind of see what their status is and, and everything like that. So Hamilton gets Mil- gets lumped in with us because you can't spell Hamilton without Milton. But so, you know, we're a rapid transit community, as I said, and the way that the guidelines are written is, you know, if you're a rapid transit community, your zoned capacity obligation is 25% of your year-round housing units. And so our year-round housing units in 2020, uh, was 9844, times point two five is, is 2461. Um, so that's where that number came, comes from.
Tim, could I, could I interrupt you just for one more? Can you validate, can we validate? Can you validate? Can our town validate that 9844? Where, where does? Is that, is that an accurate number?
That is, that is based on the census, um, which is, you know, what the state and the federal government and quite frankly, us base our, our figures on. Um, I, you know, I can go in and confirm that the 2020 year-round housing count was 9844. But I, I'm not in a position to second guess the census, unfortunately.
So that is, so that is the census. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, um, that's where they pull those numbers from.
And then that developable station area, that 404, that would be also census data?
That, there's a methodology for how they, um, come up with that. I think it's probably in these asterisks is.
But taking the area of a half mile circle around the, okay. Yeah, I, I guess, I guess my, my question probably is, um, we, we, we do want to make sure that the data that they're using is accurate.
Yeah.
And.
They, they have a definition of excluded land, um, that, I, I'll, I'll have to see what it excludes. But what, what that, what, what that number feeds into is this percent of district to be located in station area. So there are other, there are other towns that have 90% of the district has to be in the station area. You know, because their station area actually is just right smack dab in the middle of town, not in the middle of a river or a state reservation or with all sorts of conservation land around it. So that's kind of how those numbers interact with each other. And then Maggie, finally, to, to your, your question about Unquity House. It, it's, it, it, the, the, this number is agnostic of housing type or, or whatever. It's literally just the units. And so Unquity House is a component of that 9844. But, um, it's, it's, it's just because it's a housing unit or a, a, a bunch of housing units in town. So those, you know, everything gets counted, everyone's house, the apartment buildings, the condo buildings, you know, the temporary apartments, you know, everything that counts as a year-round housing unit. You know, it counts in that, in that figure. When we, you know, when we eventually get to the zoning process and, and, you know, we'll continue to, you know, walk through this because it's not the easiest thing to, to get your hands around. You know, if we look at Curtis Road, which currently has a senior housing development on it. If we were to rezone that land, we're not looking at the senior housing units that are currently on it. We're looking at the land as if it were a blank slate. Um, and so anything that we zone for that land counts regardless of what's on it right now. Um, you know, we can continue to have that conversation, you know, if and when it comes up. But did I get all your questions, Maggie? I think.
Yeah, but, but just to go back to that, but, but because it's an existing senior housing, we could zone it say for, you know, 75 units. You know, if we zone it for 75 and, but knowing that Curtis House, and again, I don't know how many's there, have 25. We couldn't count the existing 25 towards it because it's senior housing.
Correct.
Correct. Right. Okay. And, um, and then I think I, I was, why I was questioning the, um, if the state was correct was because I thought, I, and I could be wrong. I was trying to find it. I thought like I went on the town's website, you know, if you go on the town's website and at the bottom of the website, it's that transparency center. I think that that's how I found, found it, like it has all the demographics of the town. And I'm trying to figure it out now, so I apologize. But, um, I just thought it got a different, um, housing count. So that's why I'm just questioning the, the accuracy of that number. And I think we should always question the state, Tim.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, w- we can, we can definitely, you know, double check all of that. I, I, I don't have a particular reason to, to doubt that number. It's similar to numbers that I've seen. But I'll, I'll, I'll double check that, um, and just make sure that they're, they're, they're dealing with. I mean, you may, Maggie, you may be looking at households versus housing units, which would be different. Not, not crazily different, but it's, it's a different sort of thing. But we'll, we'll, we'll double check, um, you know, that figure.
Since, since we got you going and we're peppering you with questions, can I, can I continue to pep you with? The, how, how many units? Well, maybe I'll, maybe I'll say it differently. Can you calculate the number of units that are in the so-called Elliott Street corridor? You know, would, would, would we be able to? And, and because I guess if we're talking about adding 1,200 units into whatever that district is, I, I, it'd be, I, I, I hope we could determine how many units are already in that district.
Yeah, that's, that's knowable.
I think you calculated 1,700 on your last map. So I remember thinking it was roughly, we were.
It's 1,800. I reached out to Ellen Bishop in GIS Department and I asked him to do that map of the half mile. But he also provided me with a spreadsheet of all the housing units in that area. And it, he did a fantastic job. And he broke it down by single, um, single family. He broke it down by two family, three family. And, uh, greater than four units and greater than eight units. And it's all broken down by address and, um, property. So it's 1,820.
1,820. The reason, the reason I ask, and I think this is going to be true for any district in town that we identify as, um, those so-called districts where we would rezone. You know, of those people that live in that district, they, just imagine we meet with the folks from the Elliott Street District. I think it's important for them to be told there are 1,800 homes here now. And if we comply, create the zoning, envision that this could go from 1,800 to 3,000. You know, they need to understand the scale of the density of people that would, would take up the same physical area. You know, it's, it is the same area. We're not creating new land where we're changing the utilization of that land. So more housing units can be on it. And that's why I think that number is going to be really important for when we do meet with the neighbors of that, uh, of Elliott Street, so they can understand that. Because, you know, getting, getting one, one of the, one of the, um, I think one of the response responsibilities we have, it might be the highest responsibility we have is appropriate communication. So we explain this to people in a way that they can understand it. And, um, you know, like many things, um, you know, the, it sounds very friendly. The MBTA Communities Act, very friendly, that expression. And probably well thought through when they, when they came up with it. But, you know, if you're living, if you live over there and you realize there are 1,800 homes there now and you're going to add 1,200 homes to it, then I think you can have a, a perspective on the scale and the size of the change that will, will, um, happen to that neighborhood. And I, that's something I think we should do for each of the neighborhoods that we think we, we would be able to, uh, um, change the zoning pool.
Thank you, Cheryl. You had your hand up. And Rich, next.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to try and get us, say, hyper-focused if we can. Because I think we, we're dealing with the hypotheticals. And I appreciate the questions about some data and some starting points. And I think those are valid questions. But until we get the scope of work outlined and we get, start looking and analyzing this, we're just going to continue to deal with hypotheticals. And there's some very specific tasks in the work plan that will help us understand the district, the dimensional requirements, how big it needs to be, how many units could fit, what kind of sites we're talking about. And it won't be as, as hypothetical once we get that work started and get a consultant engaged. And so I'm trying to employ or get all of us to please, uh, stay on, on topic to getting the work planned discussed so we can, it's 9:30. Both Maggie and I have said that we are battling some kind of virus. I would not, I would like not to be discussing the work, or the scope of work with util at 11:00. I'd like to really get that discussed so we can see what we need to do, if we need to revise it a little bit, if there's room to revise it. So we can actually start moving this forward. We're in the middle of January right now. We don't have a January meeting date. We're talking about February 9th, December of this year. We'll be here before we know it. So.
All right. That's good. Good. Thank you. And Rich, you have your hand down now?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna talk about it in interest of time. I was looking.
Great. All right. So let's go through, um, this, Tim, is there anything else that folks would like to add? To the document? And Tim, good, good work on this. Thank you so much. You put a lot of thought into this and, um, and again, I think this is a, this is sort of in a, a plan of intention. It's not, nothing's in concrete here and it is, it's very fluid. So.
Yeah, just, just, just to, to, to recap, um, you know, additions into that sort of non-housing priority section is, is open space preservation, capacity creation, the whole, the whole nine. is, is open space preservation, capacity creation, the whole, the whole nine. We want to make sure that we, um, we reference, you know, the, the, you know, the, our, our interest in the capacity of the existing public transit and its ability to absorb new riders. And also to reinforce the Commonwealth's commitment to improving the Matapan Line, you know, given, given their, their ask of us to, to increase housing capacity around it. I think those were the two, the two additions there. Um, I'm going to double check that housing unit number, um, just to make sure that they're, they're, they're dealing with the correct data. And then, you know, we talked about a, a couple of other things and, and, you know, I'll definitely want to get started on figuring out how to organize and, and publicize a, a meeting with the, uh, the Elliot Street and sort of vicinity neighbors. But I think that was it. So I'm going to make those additions.
Does that sound good?
Yeah, the only, yeah, the only, um, thing I was going to say to Sean's, um, question was, can you submit questions? The very last sentence of the action plan, it says, is there any other feedback you would like to share about the compliance process? Please use this space. So I don't know if Sean, you could put your questions there.
I, I, I'm, I'm totally happy to, to do that, um, you know, and, and if, if folks want to feed me questions, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily something we need to pin down right now. So if you have questions or input or anything like that, that you want to add in. And, and like I said, there's, you know, there's, there's an open inbox that they have. And, you know, I think it would be good to, you know, if, if you have questions that you want to feed to me, um, you know, to send to that. But I mean, anyone in the Commonwealth conceivably could, could email, you know, um, D A C D at their, at their M B T A Communities address. So, um, you're not limited to just working through me.
Cheryl, have we, have we, have we addressed what you wanted to address?
Well, is it with regard to the work plan, I think, um, I think that given that its deadline is pending, that we know it's not hard fast, that this is absolutely at, that there's no room for flexibility once it's submitted. But I would like to authorize Tim to submit it, um, on our behalf. And then, as he said, there's, that doesn't preclude additional questions to be sent in, additional outreach to be done. And so I think if we want to continue to talk about things as we, as information kind of comes before us, we continue to feed those questions to Tim and send them in. But I think a lot of what we're going to, we will be so much more informed once we get the consultant work going, that I, I think that's going to generate a lot of questions. And so I, I really do think that it's important to get the work plan filed and to get the consultant going.
Is that a motion, Cheryl?
It is. Thank you, Meredith.
Yeah, can I, can I ask a question, Tim? Be, when you reach the point where you have this, um, ready to go, right, and you're ready to submit it, could it be distributed to the planning board members? So we could all just look at it and acknowledge that where we're satisfied and we support it as it's written. We don't, I, I don't want to slow it down by waiting for a meeting, but is that, is that reasonable?
Y- y- yeah. What, what I can do, and, and this isn't, it's not, it's not perfect because there are a couple of lines that get cut off. But, um, I can, I can sort of do, it's an online form, I can do it. And then, um, kind of create this PDF and you'll kind of see what the final language is. There's, some, some of the long form answers are good, but some of the short form answers get cut off. There's one, uh, one, uh, where is it? And just to ease your minds about something, hold on. There's a.
There's nothing that will ease our minds on this.
I know. The, um, question two point two A, uh, please briefly describe the housing work underway. That's an answer that gets cut off when I do the PDF. But what that answer just basically says is terrorously adopted mixed-use zoning in the Milton Village Business District, currently considering similar zoning for the East Milton Business District. Um, and I think we also mentioned, um, the approval of all of the forty B projects. So there's no way for that not to be cut off, but, um, that's, that's basically what it says. Everything else is a long form answer that, um, I'll add everything. And then before I fire it off, I'll send it to you all.
That'd be great.
Yep.
That'd be great.
We have a motion? Yep, we have a motion. We need a second. And which we amend the motion to say subject, you know, in requesting Tim to distribute prior to, to sending to select board.
Yeah, the mo- the motion, uh, I don't want to restate the motion. I'll let Cheryl do that. But there is a, there's a date of submission, right? Right, and that's, that's really what.
The, yeah, the deadline is the thirty first of January.
Well, we, we never should submit anything on the day it's submitted. We should submit it at least the day before. Can, can we agree that we want to submit it on, what is the thirtieth? But whatever it is, the last business day before it's the day we do.
Then Tim's going to be sending this or reviewing this with the select board next week, so they may have a, a minor change of their own. So I would say that, um, my motion would be that we authorize Tim to, uh, proceed with the next steps, which would be review with the select board and submission, uh, in, ahead of the deadline of the thirty first. And, uh, provided that he distribute the final language in advance of that date or that submission.
Great. Is there a second?
I think Sean just.
I'll second it.
Sorry, is that a second? Okay. Great, roll call. Uh, Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Rich?
Yeah, yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great. So now let's move on to you Teal's, um.
Yeah. Tim, can you pull that up on the screen?
Well, ju- just, just real, real quick, just to sort of set this up. There's two things at work here. One is a scope of work that we've been discussing for consultant services to, to yet be named. And the other is this scope of work that we have for U T L, which is through a twenty thousand dollar grant from the Mass Housing Partnership. I've, I've explained this, but just to sort of set the table, the way that M H P works is they have a stable of firms that they work with and match those up with municipalities. And so we got matched up with U T L. And they also have, it's not, it's not as freewheeling as our other grant where it's whatever we feel we need to do. They have a specific sort of set of buckets that they're, you know, tasked to help towns with. And so that's where that, that U T L scope comes from is, you know, out of, you know, we had a meeting with U T L, um, about, you know, out of these buckets, what do you think you're going to need the most kind of help with? And so that's kind of how that, how that scope got developed. So I'll bring that up to Cheryl's request and we can take a look at it.
All right, so given that we've hit the maximum with that grant, I'd like to suggest then that there's some things that I didn't think there's adequate resources given to. And so perhaps that's where our consultant can augment this work. So if you go to number two there, just scroll down a little bit more, two and three. So here it's drafting dimensional standards two point two. Those to me are really, really important and they're only, um, allotting being able to do it for one preferred district, which I get. But I think, um, we've talked about how it's, if Milton's going to meet this M B T A Communities requirement, it's likely that we're going to need to look outside of the Elliot Street corridor as well. And so here we only have one district that's getting any dimensional standards proposed. And then, um, the massing visualizations, you know, um, there's no room for modifying or updating the visualizations after that's presented to the public. So there's some allotment in three point three for revisions to dimensional standards, but no allotment of time to update massing visualizations. And so these are really critical to understanding how this district might work. So I feel as if twenty hours for massing visualizations, plus the couple of people who are overseeing that work. That's not a ton of time. And even the dimensional standards of ten hours with one person and fourteen hours for another. And then maybe some, some revisions of ten and twenty. Seems like there's a lot of time to the dimensional standards and the district boundaries, but not much to visualization. So maybe they can shift those around a little bit. But I think a lot more attention is going to need to be paid to that to really understand how this, these just, and I hope more than one district, uh, how it might work. So those were my comments I wanted to convey.
Yeah, so Cheryl, to, to, to that point, and, and I definitely appreciate that. And then what I, what, what I, what I tried to do with the revised scope for the, um, the, the R F P, I'll, I'll use that term, um, you know, for our other grant is basically, you know, take what, because we've been talking about what the board's priorities are for what, what professional services we need. You know, regardless of who they come from is, you know, cost benefit analysis, build out analysis, visualizations, community outreach. Um, these are the things that we're going to need help with. And so what I tried to do, once I, once we got, you know, matched up with U T L and, and, you know, my, my, my department had a meeting with them and kind of like learned, you know, all right, here's what they'll be able to do and, and, and here's where we think we need sort of help, is to try to kind of, you know, fit the two scopes together like a jigsaw puzzle. Um, and so if, you know, if U T L is able to do, you know, something, we can sort of leave it there and kind of shift more resources elsewhere in the other scope. Um, and so like, for instance, you know, one thing you'll see is, you know, U T L doesn't have a ton about, you know, actually drafting the language. So we'll need, you know, someone else to do that with us. Um, and so that's where, um, Cheryl's face is in the way here. Where did I, where did I go? Oh, it was a Word document, sorry. You know, so, so, so this scope, you know, has, you know, the, the zoning language. You know, there's, there's not a lot of community outreach options in the U T L scope. And so we'll, you know, you know, community outreach is going to sort of be on another consultant team. So, you know, I, I've made a sort of a first blush attempt at trying to sort of match these things up. It's not as, it's not as elegant as, as I would like, because I think there is, you know, a lot of ways that, you know, some tasks need to be done before others. I think, you know, the build out analysis is kind of step one. You know, because without understanding, you know, what the implications of, you know, whether it's full build out or partial build out over whatever timeline, without having that information, you know, the cost benefit analysis doesn't have an input. And so, you know, I, I think there's, there's, there's another conversation to be had about, you know, what is, you know, what is the timing of these things and, you know, does, do we want to organize it so, you know, U T L puts together a package? You know, and then we can hand that off to another consultant. Do they work together, you know, simultaneously? You know, I think task one, you know, here is, you know, coordinating with me and my department and U T L, you know, and, and being in close collaboration. You know, there's another way of thinking about it of, you know, one firm does their work and then passes it off to the next one, depending on what kind of tasks we want to do. But I think, you know, Cheryl, just not, not to, not to get too off task on, 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 on your points, because I think having that really, you know, good idea of, you know, we want visualizations, but also, you know, not just one, we may need, we need, we need, we may need more than one scenario. Well, one thing that I'll say is when they talk about one preferred district, and this is something that drives me a little crazy about the whole thing. When, when M B T Communities talks about a district, they're talking about everything that you do to get compliant. So like if we were to say, we're going to do a sub-district in the transit area and we're going to do a sub-district on Granite Ave, that's the district, right? And even though they're not necessarily contiguous, they compile or compose the district. I think when they, when they say one preferred district, I think what they're kind of referring to is like not going through multiple iterations or multiple variations of the district.
Yeah, so when I look at that, Tim, and I look at forty six hours and sixty five hours of the bulk of it, and then you've got some other people, I mean, it's really like three people for a week and a week and a half. And I think about the magnitude of study that we need or the scope that we, in order to really understand that. And I think about that, that's not being a lot of time. So I, you know, and just in terms of man hours. So I would say I'd be interested in how long they would take to do this. If they can do this work fairly quickly, then pass it off. I think it would be beneficial because then we would know a lot more about what we may need the second consultant to help augment here and what we think is already a good baseline.
I would agree with that, Cheryl. I was going to say exactly the same thing. I am seeing this as almost like a three-pronged approach, um, that we, we have U T L do their work. Again, you know, we would like for them to, I would like to see them wrap up their work because I really don't think we even know what the consultants, what we want to put into an R F P for our consultants until we know what the, until we get the work done with U T L.
I do. I, I am familiar with their work and they do good work and they've done a lot of urban planning work. And so I'm hopeful that we'll get some good production out of them in that, in that amount of time. But I just hope it doesn't take six months to get, right?
So if we can get that done in a reasonable amount of time, we'll know when we're nearing the end of that probably, that we could pull our R F P together, send something out and have a consultant to come in who's really going to help, help us with the analysis. But until we know what they're going to analyze and what data, you know, but what we're looking at, I think it would be a waste of money for any consultants just to start working for the sake of working when something could completely change and the district could change and the needs could change. And then I, then lastly, I think we should do, you know, really do our due diligence. And then at that time, then begin writing the zoning. I think it makes, it doesn't make sense to write the zoning, you know, put the cart before the horse and, and, um, have somebody start working on something, which is, again, could completely change. So I, I definitely think it should be step one, step two, step three, and just a thoughtful, and a thoughtful approach to, to dealing with all the questions. And, and a lot of it, you know, I think we can, you know, have, do in town, you know, with, with some of the staff, provide information to help feed the consultant, um, to not slow anything down. But, but I think I wouldn't want to write an R F P right now for the consultant services until I see U T L's.
I think we can write a draft and continue to work on the draft and it can always be modified. Because you, we, you know, it's, it's taking months to get to this point and I'm afraid that it's going, we'll lose months if we wait. But, you know, I think we teed up, we, we reach out to consultants who might be interested, we tell them it's coming. You know, we can fine tune the scope after you till. But again, I don't, if you till is going to take months and months, I, I'm not sure we want to wait that long either because we don't have that kind of time. So Tim, did you find out when you till can begin and how long it would take?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think, I, I haven't given them the, the, the one hundred percent go ahead because I just wanted to make sure that the board had a chance to look at the scope and, and kind of digest it. You know, we could, if, if, if anyone feels strongly about anything, we could certainly change it. But I mean, this is, you know, it's a twenty thousand dollar grant and, you know, these are the basic kind of things that they're going to be doing. But I think they're ready to, to, to go, you know, once I give the word. I don't have a, a timeline on their work, um, but, you know, we can kind of, I, I can convey to them kind of what our thinking is. Because, you know, we had a conversation and, and, you know, they know we're getting other consultant services and we kind of talked through that. But I, I think, you know, we can, we can talk to them about what our approach wants to be and they can come up with a timeline, you know, accordingly. You know, one way or the other, they should probably get started. Um, and then, you know, if it takes.
And I said, maybe they shift a few hours around here and there. I did see in their work plan that they did have that caveat that they might do that as they see it. So I mean, I, I'm comfortable, given that there is, um, a restriction in how much money we have available, they've got, it seemed, I'm comfortable with the, with the scope that we can get done, knowing that we're going to have additional consultant work. So I would be supportive of moving forward with you till, with, with this work plan.
Can I just ask one question on when we ask for dimensional, um, visualization? Should, do we need to be more specific, Cheryl, would you say, in say, three D dimensional? Is there, do we need to add any other language to the visualizations? Is there, do we need to add any other language to the visualizations that we would be asking? I know, you know, when we were doing the overlay zoning in the village, it was really helpful to see from different viewpoints, different elevations, you know, looking up the hill, looking down the hill, you know, to see sort of the impact of what this looks like.
Well, I think this is where I said, Meredith, a little bit of more back and forth or more modification might be necessary, because you have to start with something. So I think we're going to get a good start here and that it might be that we get more of that with the next consultant, right? So just like in Milton Village, we started with a certain amount from MAPC and we decided that wasn't quite enough, right? So I think we can anticipate that for the, probably for the next consultant.
Unless that's why my question was, if we asked for that in the beginning, if we're just more clear and specific, maybe we could actually get more out of util and not need that, but I just didn't know.
You know, Meredith, to that point, I think, you know, one thing, and I look at the UTL scope a little bit as, you know, kind of like a first draft. Because it's, you know, even I have a hard time kind of getting my head around like what any of this is going to look like. And so to be able to have those tools to, you know, we're going to be doing community outreach on an ongoing basis. You know, so the sooner we can get, you know, a map, just a draft map that shows a line, and this is what this could look like. And then people can start moving that line and kind of moving those dimensions around. You know, but having something to show people, I think is going to be important. And so, you know, it's, I think, you know, speed is probably more important than volume, I think, at this point. Because, you know, the more you can start having that conversation about the actual numbers and figures and lines, you know, the better. Because I think, you know, there's, and there's going to, there's obviously more information that we're going to need. And I think, you know, that build out analysis, you know, and that sort of knowing, you know, okay, we have a decent idea of how big a district is going to be. And, you know, how, you know, how big the buildings are going to be, that feeds into the impact analysis. And, you know, people are very interested in that and we want to get going on that. And so that's why I say like, kind of like the speed is more important than, you know, fiddling around the edges with.
Yeah, so that's what on the dimensional, I'm kind of thinking the dimensional standards would be something like, okay, if you have a three-story building, here's what your setbacks might be. If you have a four-story building, here's what your setbacks might be and what your height limits are going to be. So how, and then to Tim, sort of one of Tim's early presentations where he said, if you have this level density, you're probably looking at like three-story buildings. But if you, if you make it a smaller district and you still have to hit the same density, you're talking about taller buildings kind of thing. I'm thinking that that's the kind of analysis that gets applied more specific to here, rather than just those diagrams that are very generic, right? So I don't know, Tim, if that's part of the conversations that you've had. But certainly I think that, that's kind of what I'm thinking helps understand. So you put those on a piece of paper, the dimensional standards are like two D, and then you start the visualizations on the three D. But so it's like some numbers and dimensions calculations initially, then it starts to pop itself out. Is that what it was?
Yeah, that's what I was.
Okay.
There's only, there's only a hundred and sixty hours.
No.
That's not, that's not much. I mean, a hundred and sixty hours.
Sixty hours on something, you know, design wise or analyzing wise. I won't tell you how many hours I spent in Milton Village analyzing. But, you know, that's why I said, Sean, it's a starting point. I see it as a starting point. And Tim's right, you need a starting, we need a starting point.
So I think we get one iteration out of this and then, and then we work with that.
Yeah, exactly. And I support what was said earlier. I think util all day long, they go first and, and we tailor our RFP after we get what util does for work to have the second consultant give us what we want. And a question on this. Is util a candidate for the second consulting agreement?
They could.
Yeah, I just thought I'd throw it out there. I mean, it might, it might make more sense to take what they give us and advance that than to bring somebody else along. I don't know, I guess I want to continue to think about that with you all.
Yeah, I mean.
And see what makes sense.
The, the way that solicitation will work is it's a sub fifty thousand dollar solicitation. So we don't have to do the full RFP like we did with the East Milton project. But we do have to put together a scope of work that's consistent. And then we have to solicit at least three, you know, qualified firms. So, you know, we would hand it off to util, we'd hand it off to a couple other firms. And then, you know, with that type of solicitation, if I'm, unless I'm mistaken and I'll double check with town council, you know, we do have to take technically the low bid in that situation. With a, with a full RFP, you can put in those selection criteria that allow you to, you know, consider price, but also consider other factors. But, you know, that's something we can work that out where we're a little bit closer.
Okay, and I, this, I just want to mention when we, when we do consider that second consultant after util, I, we cannot ignore the financial implications of this. I know you're, you're all probably recalling me saying this in the past. But, you know, working through some just simple available data, you know, it's just, just go look at, you know, our town report from last year, you can, you can pull this data out. But when you extrapolate the costs that the town may have by adding the number of housing units to the town, you'll quickly see how the budget for the town of Milton will absolutely explode. And I am talking if we add the twenty-four hundred and sixty-one units. And again, I'm going to come back to this, because, Tim, I think you told us that the benefit that we received was a million dollars over ten years. That was the funding, that was the funding benefit that we would forego if, if we do not comply. And I'm going to continue to work on this and I've asked for some people in town that have the capacity and the ability and the time to help me with this. But, you know, right now I'm seeing a potential cost impact, a budget cost impact that's over twenty million dollars to the town. If we added twenty-four hundred and sixty-one units, compare that to a hundred thousand dollars a year. And this is not calculating any capital expense, no capital expense, no additional school building, you know, no additional, you know, firehouse. So we're talking like a two hundred to one ratio. If, if my math is right, if our budget goes up by twenty million for twenty-four hundred and sixty-one units and that funding is a hundred thousand dollars a year, we have a huge gap. So I don't know if a consultant is out there that can help us with that, or we just do that in town. We, we find the resources in town to evaluate our costs as we know them.
Yeah, I mean, so a couple of things there, Sean. I, I'm super interested in that math, you know, so I, I'd like to know what kind of, what those inputs are. I mean, this is not necessarily my wheelhouse, but, you know, I think, you know, it's, it's, it's a serious conversation. And I think, you know, the scope, the draft scope that we've got, you know, includes that, you know, municipal impact analysis, which I think is really, really crucial. You know, I think that if we choose to work with someone on the outside, you know, they're obviously going to need to work very closely with the town administrator and all the department heads and everyone. I do think that bringing in outside help on those questions, I think is going to be really important. I think we do have a lot of resources on a staff and a volunteer basis, you know, to bear on these questions. But I think, you know, there are, you know, there are professional methodologies out there for this type of thing. And I think the seriousness and the importance of that question merits that. And so that'll just have to be, you know, we'll, we'll have to figure out how to get that done.
Agreed, agreed. And I think, you know, our budget is prepared by us internally. So, you know, I am, I am pretty confident that we have, we have the people in the town. And if you said to them, hey, imagine that your population is going to increase as a result of adding twenty-four hundred and sixty-one units. Do the math in terms of what you think that might cost us as a town. We can do it in town, we can do that in town. And, you know, I've said in the past, the select board, you know, they have probably the highest level of responsibility for steering this town financially down a path that we can actually go on. So between the select board, our town administrator and the warrant committee, they need to be part of this process.
Thank you, Sean. Maggie, you had your hand up and then Rich?
Yeah, no, I fully understand that we have the grant from UTL. And I know that we're sort of kind of stuck with them. But I also feel like UTL is in bed with the state. And they're going to sort of direct us in a way that the state wants us to go. So even if they provide us all this information, modeling and all of that, I'm still not sure if I'm comfortable that they are providing us in a direction that I think that, you know, that we want to go. I don't feel comfortable saying, having you feel kind of lead us down this path. And I know it's, you can't lift, you know, a gift to us in the mouth. So I understand that we're kind of stuck with them. But I'm also a little afraid when I was looking at their scope, you know, I think it was mentioned about their outreach. It seems to me that UTL is assuming that our residents are already informed and well versed in the mandate, but I don't think that's an accurate assumption. So they're not providing any, you know, a general information outreach forum. So I really do think it's on us to have to have these meetings and forums. And I think we're going to have to have it, you know, along Elliott Street corridor and then the Columbines. And then I think we're going to have to have it in East Milton and Granite Ave. And so that's why I'm just a little uncomfortable that UTL hasn't provided any like time for general outreach. But I don't know if we can allocate some of their time, maybe like, I don't know, you know, two forums prior to them actually, you know, providing a forum on their dimensional requirements.
Maggie, what I would say to that is, you know, given, given the constraints on the budget that we have with them, you know, we as, as a staff and as volunteers, you know, I think are capable of of doing a sufficient amount of outreach. I, that money is better spent utilizing the very specific professional expertise that that firm has. I think, you know, in terms of the materials that they can provide, those are going to be very important to inform our kind of our work. And just, you know, you know, as it, as it relates to sort of, you know, whether, whether they're somehow, you know, conflicted with, you know, a relationship with the state or whatever. This, this is, this scope of work is informed by your and by extension, the town's priorities. So, you know, it's very straight down the middle empirical stuff. You know, we say that we want there to be fifteen-foot setbacks and they're going to draw fifteen-foot setbacks. You know, we are going to say we want the line to be here and they're going to draw that line. They are performing a technical duty for us. And we as a town, I'm saying we, you know, I work for, you know, for Milton, you know, you represent Milton. You know, you are the ones that are feeding in the directives to the consultant. So, you know, it's, you know, there's, there's a source of money from MHP. MHP has a vested interest in this zoning being a success. But, you know, you know, we should have an interest in doing our best to comply with state law. And we're going to use those resources. But, you know, you are completely in the driver's seat in terms of your directives towards any of these consultants.
Thank you. All right, Rich?
Yeah, well, just two quick things. I saw this one, and now it's ten o'clock, so I'm hoping we can push to a vote or do something soon. My other comment, just because I heard it a couple times tonight, but we talked about it a lot, at least over the five years I've, I've been on here, about making sure that folks know or hear about things. You hear in a lot of town meetings, folks will stand up or say, I met people that didn't know about something. You know, it's easy for me to say, I'm going to say it. This has been in a lot of plenty more meetings, a lot of select board meetings, there's been a lot of other meetings televised, it's been in the newspaper. It's been on probably every single Facebook channel for the past several months at least. And so, you know, I get it, there are people that still are not going to hear it. But I mean, at the end of the day, unless we are going to come up with some ways to do that outreach, because I appreciate and I agree with you, Tim, I think you guys are fully capable. But you're, you know, there's still going to be somebody that didn't know. And unfortunately, that's the way it is. Some, if you're, if people are, you know, kind of engrossed in their lives and they're not paying attention to what's going on in town, there's, there's not a whole lot we can do unless we come up with some more creative ways. And so what I would put on folks or on this, around this virtual table is, let's spend some time thinking of those ways so that it's not, so that we feel comfortable that we've done our due diligence. And then when we hear people say, hey, we didn't know, we don't just, we don't just say, hey, people didn't know. Because that's not, I don't think it's helpful. Because there's, the fact of the matter is, we're, nobody, not every single person in this town is going to, I don't want to say they care, but they just don't have time. Maybe they're engrossed in something else, something else going on in their life. And so I want to make sure that we come up with better ways.
Thank you, Rich. Yeah, agreed. And, and I'd like to definitely put this on the agenda for, I know, right now, at least February ninth, our February ninth meeting. And, you know, we can be thinking about ways to maybe reach out to some of our neighbors on Elliott Street, on the Elliott Street corridor.
Yeah, and I'll do a little work in terms of maybe putting together some, you know, publicity type materials. We can kind of, you know, figure out a time, date, place, you know, whatever, and we can, you know, start to get a move on on that. So happy to work on that.
Great, Cheryl?
Yeah, I just, Maggie's comment about util being in bed with the state. You know, util is a firm that is composed of professionals who have expertise that we can benefit from. And I would hope that you rethink your comment or thought about that with respect to the work that they can do for us. And, you know, because they're funded by, I think it's Mass Housing Partnership. But they do, they, they have done tons of this kind of work. And we couldn't ask for a more experienced kind of consultant to help us. And so I just hope that people who are watching are going to have confidence that the, the work that they're going to do for us will be very beneficial. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Tim to enter into contract with util and begin this work as soon as possible and to get a schedule from them so that we can be sure that we understand what our timeframes are.
Do I have a second to that?
Yeah.
Yes, Maggie's seconding. Okay, great, roll call. Rich? Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
And then I think, you know, as, and I don't want to, we can wrap up soon. As it relates to the other scope of work, I think, you know, we did get an email from, from Alex about that with some notes. I actually thought some of those notes were, were pretty good. You know, Alex and I don't always see eye to eye, but I thought he did a good job. So I think, you know, as we're starting to sort of continue to think about what we need out of that scope, you know, let's put a pin in some of those notes, because I think he had some good ideas.
I agree. Thank you. So if there's not anything else.
I just want one question. I didn't get that email, whatever Alex had sent. Would you mind, would you mind sending it?
I thought it looked like everyone was CC'd on that from him, but I'll.
Oh, really?
I'll follow that along.
Thanks, it could be me.
It could be a progress or something.
Great, Tim, thank you. You can just reset that out to everybody. All right. And with that, if there's nothing else, I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
Great, Rich, okay, and then a second by Sean. All right, roll call, Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thanks for the email, Tim. Yeah, all right. Have a great night, guys.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.